Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, November 17th, 2015. Go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Happily here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance, many of you probably noticed the flags are at half-staff outside in the town and throughout the United States and the world, really, following the terror attacks in Paris. And so if you would please join us in a moment of silence for all the folks that were lost and their lives affected by that terror attack in Paris. Thank you very much. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We are going to move to adopt our agenda, but we do have a couple of changes to make. Councilmember Muller?
I'd like to move that we adopt tonight's agenda with the following two changes. I'd like to request that we move item 10A immediately after item 5, public comment, and that we delete item 7, presentations, and reschedule that for another time.
Second?
And just to explain before we vote on that, we're moving up the staff informational report that we had planned on, that's the Hopper Creek flood mitigation update, and we will be adding to that conversation, conversation and a staff report about the status of the flood wall over by Rancho and Gateway. So I know many of you are here tonight about that issue. So we, I would ask that you hold any comments instead of having them at public comment. We'll have it right after that when we're addressing that item. So with the changes as proposed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And so now is public comment on anything not on our agenda and what we're not about to talk about. So if there's anything, Jerry, what do you have for us this week?
This weekend is going to be a busy weekend for Pastor Halton and his crew. Also, he's pitching in Saturday and last night events, 11:12 of Daniel, and is having a meeting tomorrow evening at seven on the Book of John. Now, this Sunday, we're going to have a Rodeo Thanksgiving with the family. We have the Yountville Church around this Rodeo Thanksgiving, twelve day evening, Paul and Luke. And it's going to be in the forest afternoon at two, Sunday, the 22nd of November.
At two?
Yeah. And you are freely welcome.
All right. Thank you very much, Jerry. Any others on, anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move ahead to our staff informational report that was item 10A, and we have a 10B. So I'll turn it over to our town manager. We'll talk, are we going to talk first about the flood mitigation update?
We will talk, yes. And Debbie Height, our Deputy Public Works Director, will provide a update, and we'll add a little bit more to it.
Thank you. Debbie?
The Hopper Creek Drainage and Flood Project is moving along. The, in general, all the, all the work within the creek banks is complete, except for some, there, there are some punch list items that are, that are remaining. On Hop 10, the area that joins the French Laundry Gardens, that's complete except for plantings at the top of the, that's the first picture that you see up there, plantings at the top of the, the bank and the split rail fences that, that get replaced along the top of the bank. Along the Velagio Channel, that's the second picture, that's also complete except for the top of bank plantings and restringing the, the chain link, the black chain link fence along those areas. Hop 7, the Oak Circle and Heather, Heather Streets, that's also complete. We talked about that last time. We're still awaiting the sidewalk installation. Apparently, the white truncated domes are a long lead item that we didn't know about. But, so we're, we're waiting for the white truncated domes for that particular area. We're, we're do, we're trying to match the design of the Oak Circle Park across the street. The, and also, they also have to do some bank reseeding in there. The, the plantings along the top of the, the Oak Circle area and the, the area down near Heather Court where the detention basins are, that, those, those plans are complete, and they're being bid right now by the contractor. And there'll be, there'll be a change order issued for that. Hop 5, the Fennel Road area, the inlet and outlet structures you see in the, in the two last pictures, those two concrete structures are complete, and those, those will be the two structures that the three thirty, once the three thirty-six inch pipes are placed in Fennel, they, they connect on both those ends. The contractors laying, right now, they're laying the 12-inch storm drain that runs along the fence line on the south side of Fennel that takes the place of the ditch. And at some point, there'll be a sidewalk over the top of that. The eight inch, tomorrow, tomorrow night, actually, about one o'clock in the morning, the eight inch water line will be turned off, and there'll be some work done. The Bardassano Hotel, the Bardassano and a couple of residences are affected. They'll, Bardassano will be back on in a couple of hours, and then the other residences will be off until about noon on Thursday, but everybody's on board with that. Everybody's been notified. PG&E is scheduled to begin work Monday with their, with their boring activities, and they're, they'll be continuing work through the week before Christmas.
The only thing I would really say is the, we're not pleased with the progress and pace with PG&E. This was originally something the utility relocation should have been completed during the July time period. So we are working with our contractors to evaluate, but as anybody might imagine, the trenching necessary to put three thirty-six inch culverts in requires significant utility relocation. We are hopeful that PG&E will be out when they say they will, but they've not met some timelines before. So as we get closer into it, we will also have to monitor the weather situation to see if it is appropriate. If we reach into December and January, we may be forced to have, depending on the weather forecast, a, a further delay until the, the season's appropriate. So I just want to, we're hopeful that that's not going to be the case, but we also want to be realistic that, you know, if, if the weather forecast does not look appropriate for opening the road, then we will have a delay until late spring on that so that the contractor is able to work through in an effective way. So for the most part, the project is buttoning up, but a significant element remains. So we will keep you apprised, especially as it stands with the PG&E component, because really, as Debbie mentioned, with the exception of a few punch list items and the annoying lack of a sidewalk on Oak Circle, the project outside of the storm culvert connections are really about 95% complete. And then we're down to the, the larger section, which is the, the bypass channels that go from the creek. Consistent with all of the regulatory requirements, we have completed all of the work in the two waterways in concert with those conditions. So we're optimistic, but it would have been nice if PG&E had concluded the work when they said they would have. All right. Let's go to another item.
Well, before you get into the flood wall, can you use the transition between these two items? Explain the projects you just described, how they're going to impact the flood potential downstream? The whole point of these projects is to eliminate or greatly reduce?
I think there's two things that everybody in Yountville needs to recognize. Yountville has, we are impacted by two flooding situations. The first is the incidental overflow of Hopper, Hopper Creek as it comes through. And that can occur principally on a 10-year storm event, and it happens with a degree of frequency, usually with a, a minor nuisance. So the particular projects that you've just seen highlighted here are really designed to try to provide more peak storm capacity. In a significantly large event, Hopper Creek will flood. So the, the efforts here are to mitigate the likelihood of the smaller storm events. The second type of flooding event that happens in Yountville and has generally resulted in the more picturesque pictures, including some I'll show you shortly, is Apple, excuse me, is what is known as when the Napa River overflows. So we are in a unique situation here in the Napa Valley where we don't have a current understanding based on real-life experience of how the Napa River is going to behave with the new flood work that had been continuing on the river. So that's some good news, but we don't know how it will behave. So the flooding that the flood wall was built for, with a FEMA grant and town funding back in the 2003, 2005 era, was designed to prevent and keep the floodwaters from when the Napa River overtops. So I just want to kind of clarify the two projects. So what we're principally doing with Hopper Creek is designing to try to get that flow through town in a safer way and out where it connects into the river. And then the flood wall is obviously been something that's historical to prevent. The southeast quadrant of town is the lowest part of town and therefore the most subject. So you start reaching Vineyard Circle and going in to where the two Mobile Home Park communities are most prone to flooding from the overtopping of the Napa River. So I think that's a good segue into an update on the flood wall maintenance project. Now, what I also would like to do, I, I saw some email threads and some questions, and I think there's one thing I want to let the council and the public both know. The town staff has been working very diligently after the earthquake on a level of assessment. And as you know, we competed and worked with FEMA, and we're able to be eligible for FEMA grants for reconstruction. I'm setting a little bit of a stage because we've been working, but the FEMA process is very tedious and requires a whole lot of structure, formula-matic, if you will, and it's a very bureaucratic process with a lot of documentation. And it's much slower than our staff would like and much slower than the residents in the area would like. So I'm going to give a little bit of a history of the flood wall, where we're at, but I also want to explain that when we met with some of the residents earlier, town staff had been working with the FEMA process, the requirements that we do competitive bidding, have the project designed, the scope, and everything we do, we also have to check in with FEMA to make sure, because we ultimately need to, to ensure from a fiscal responsibility standpoint that we're going to be able to receive the funding, and we don't want to have something happen. And I won't name names, but you're aware that we have some communities that had some challenges with their FEMA obligations, and it's cost them communities. You have a very responsible staff that wants to ensure. Our staff had fully anticipated that you would have on your consent calendar tonight the approval of a contract. But as happens occasionally, when staff is doing the work that we're doing to prepare the agenda for you, if an issue comes up on something that requires us to have further evaluation and work, that item will be delayed until it's appropriate. And that is what has happened to the item tonight. The flood wall bid came in, we only received one bid, and that bid was at $580,000 or approximately $250,000 over the FEMA grant. So your staff has been working diligently to work with FEMA to make sure we understand the process for how to get that increased cost covered and the next steps. So I'm going to walk through a little bit, but I want everybody in the audience, especially the Mobile Home Park residents, to know that the person responsible for pulling the item is myself. It's not the council. The council hasn't been presented this. We have an obligation to do the homework, to present the consequences, and to identify a course of action to be successful. So we're going to walk through that, and then I'm going to just jumpstart to the fact that we're very optimistic that we will be able to present this back on the council for action on December 1st. So with that, a little bit of history, because some of the residents may not have lived here when the flood wall has actually had to be used. And some of you predate and know what it was like before the flood wall was put in. So with that, flood wall began design in 2003. The construction occurred in 2005. The flood wall is a 10-inch-wide cast-in-place textured flood wall. The texture on the exterior surfaces is designed mostly for aesthetics. The integrity is the 10-inch solid. The picture is a highlight of the December 31st, 2005, Napa River flooding experience, which this flood wall was completed just before that event. So there is both a picture. Here you saw the results. The flood wall is four feet below the top of the wall. No flooding occurred, and that particular storm event was a 7.8-inch duration rain over a, a two-day episode. Fast forward, 2005 to 2014, any of you that have concrete know that concrete has cracking. Sometimes the cracking is more of aesthetic. A concrete wall is going to have a certain amount of cracking from wear and tear, though unsightly, the cracks have no consequence to the nature of how the design of the work or the integrity of the wall. However, on August 24th, 2014, the world shook us up a little. The flood wall appeared to have, and a number of residents called and said, "Steve, town staff, this looks like there's maybe a few more cracks than we saw before. Can we come out and take a look at that?" We did, and we spent a fairly extensive amount of time at both our town staff level, along with working with representatives from the Governor's Office of Emergency Service, CAL OES, FEMA, as well as the town council authorized me to fund emergency consultants to come out. So that's what we had done. And then we were successful in working with FEMA. FEMA did identify that it appeared that the wall had some additional cracking that was the direct result of the earthquake so that we would be eligible for a repair. I won't point out that they were trying to make us identify which cracks were pre-existing and which cracks occurred after the earthquake, but nonetheless, the intent, we had to work through their process. I also want to remind everybody that while this is very important to us, in the priority of FEMA, and I think rightfully so, they prioritize projects that were more critical than others. And, and we did not fall in the most critical priority for their staff and allocation because of their initial review of the assessment. The flood wall was never found to be structurally unsafe or of any question about its integrity. So in the period of September to December, a number of engineering firms were brought in to survey, and this is where you have to fully understand, in order for us to be eligible for FEMA funding, we have to be able to document and prove the condition and what the situation was and what the necessary level of repair would be. So that's what we've worked on. This is probably the most important point that I want everybody to really recognize. And I'm going to say it first in layman's terms, and then I'll read what's up here. We've experienced identified cracking. So FEMA wants to work with us. I also want people to realize that what we're really talking about is cracking that could law, could potentially allow water seepage, which over time, and when I say over time, I mean over duration, 25, 50 years, if water continues to penetrate, it could affect the integrity of the wall, much like those of you that may have caulking or other circum, on your surfaces, there's a maintenance. So that's what we're really talking about here. We're not talking about gaping holes that water is going to come rushing in, but nonetheless, we were proceeding to have a repair plan. Obviously, it is an interesting story because we have to say, the flood wall has been damaged by the earthquake. Therefore, it needs to be repaired, but I do want to try to assure everybody that the nature of the damage is not of significant immediate concern. So I, I know that sounds like a contradiction in terms, but in one sense, if you don't have damage, you don't get to have FEMA pay for the repairs. So conversely, we're trying to do the appropriate. The engineer's inspection, and I am reading from a, a person that is a licensed engineer, which I am not. The consulting engineer reported, "The flood wall cracking that is present is not a structural crack, but rather considered a shrinkage crack, which does not impact the structural integrity of the concrete wall. The cracks were hammer-sounded and audible inspection procedure. Concrete is structurally sound, eliminating any potential danger to deterioration of the concrete surface." What I do want to point out is FEMA and the town spent a considerable amount of money on this flood wall. So our joint goals were how do we ensure the long-term success and integrity of the flood wall? So at that point, the engineer's recommendations were that a future preventative program should be implemented that would prevent cracking or potential water moisture condition. So it was recommended that we repair the cracks through use of an elastomeric wall covering. In other words, in a simple term, we're going to put a kind of fancy super-plastic coating over it that's going to be designed to help waterproof the concrete 10-inch-thick wall. I'm just trying to be real simple on what we're doing. EWC is a thick rubberized paint product with a high acrylic content, suitable for outer elements, stucco, concrete blocks. So that is what we were able to present to FEMA, and FEMA agreed on with a scope of So initially, FEMA identified approval of $313,089. The town met with a number of engineering firms and discussions to assist in the project design and the engineering, all again required by FEMA in order for us to move forward with the project. August 2015, they did the final design evaluation. August 7th, excuse me, October 7th, we opened the sealed bids. Notice was sent to 12 organizations, including at least four building bid exchanges, and those are services that contractors subscribe to, to learn about projects. On October, excuse me, November 9th, the bid opening was held. Only one bid response after a number of people indicated interest in the project. However, only one official bid was received in that amount of $580,000, significantly more than the approved-upon amount. As of that date, November 9th, recognizing that we did not have funding authorization for $580,000, town staff has been working almost from that very same day in concert with CAL OES and FEMA on what do we do since we have an approved project? And now we have real, instead of an estimate, this is what somebody thought. So the good news is we're working through that with FEMA staff, and I believe that we're going to be comfortable in being able to advance the funding structure and present this back on December 1st for approval. The net consequences, the town will have to advance the additional amount and then apply. Early indications are with FEMA staff that that is an acceptable thing. And that is what we really needed to do with due diligence, is to be able to present so that we have all that information to share with the council. And then also, when we come back with this item, we'll have to do a budget amendment authorizing that. So that is where we are at.
So isn't it typical, Steve, that FEMA funds are reimbursement funds? It's not out of the ordinary that we would have to front the money and then apply for reimbursement, but you're getting pre-approval that that process would actually take place?
We're trying, and I also want to point out that, given the magnitude of the cost, you know, this is not, this is not a simple liability. In other words, if we went ahead and started and awarded the bid, I still have to admit, we don't have budget authority to approve a $580,000 contract. So I have to bring that back administratively. We will adjust. The fact that it's a, we just want a, some level of assurance that we've done everything. We're asking FEMA staff to evaluate all of the documents, all of the bid process, because we don't want to find out a year from now, when we're going for submittal, that they're going to reject our claim for $580,000. So that's exactly what we're doing, Mayor. I think we want to make sure that we understand the process. Knock on wood, we don't apply for a lot of FEMA grants, but we do know that it's incredibly important to do them right. A $580,000 consequence to this town is not one that could be easily absorbed. So your staff is making sure that we understand the full consequences and have a funding structure, and I am very comfortable, although I will not promise, I'm very comfortable that you will see this item back on December 1st with those caveats and the understanding and the budget adjustments necessary to move forward with the award of the project.
And assuming that takes place, what would the construction schedule look like? Do we?
I think the notice to proceed would move very quickly after that, and then it would be a, a weather-dependent schedule. So you have to have enough time period, so the, the goal would be as immediately as possible as weather permits.
Is there an estimate of the month that it would start? I know the January has been thrown out there, but it could be sooner, it could be later?
I'm not, I don't want to tell somebody a date because the first thing is contracts, once we have the notice to award, there are some procedural regularities, all the contract documents. The good news is we're working with the bidders, so they're putting all that together. So I anticipate that'll move fairly quickly. They want to move forward. If, one might assume, if you've ever walked the perimeter, that's a fairly sizable project, so it does have some duration. The good news is the contractor is working with us, the contractor is, still remains interested and wants to, obviously, they, they want to kind of make sure they know they're going to get paid too.
Sure. Any questions from the council about the either report? So it's great that all your questions have been answered, and we don't have anything further to worry about. If that isn't the case, I invite anyone that would like to either ask questions or comment to come up to the podium. Please identify yourself and...
I'm Carl Nitka. You knew I was coming up. I, a little bit of history. I moved into Rancho de Napa in 1994. And in 95, January, we had the bottom of our home flooded to the insulation got, had to be replaced. In March of 95, I had chest-high, chest-high water in our, there was a foot of water in our home, and to get back to get clothes out of there, we had to walk. A fireman and I went arm-in-arm. We was fighting upstream through water that was sewer water, diesel fuel, everything in the water. It was a mess. You've never seen flood wall. I don't think any, I don't know how many of you have been in a flood. That's something that you don't want to have to go through. Anyhow, yes, I'm very concerned. That's, I wanted to bring that history up and why I'm concerned. The flood wall, after 2005, when it got completed, we did have a major flood that came in. And at that time, we had some seepage through that wall that I don't believe ever got repaired. And right now, the wall has actually moved in some spots. The top of the wall is not lined up. They're a little bit off-center, you know what I mean? So I, I don't know how it's possible, but it has moved. I know that they dug, when they put the wall in, I'm not sure how deep it went, about 15 feet down, something like that. So the wall has moved. And there is a fear that if we had an Almanio year coming up this year that was back in 95 or 90, 2005, that would that wall stand up? It's a, you know, I don't know.
Well, as you've heard...
Yes, I've heard.
Professional engineers have said that it will stand up. Well, as you've heard, professional engineers have said that it will stand up.
Yes, I know. I, that's one engineer, but you know...
There have been multiple engineers, Carl.
Yes, okay. And they're going to guarantee, from what I understood, that we're protected by FEMA if that wall does come down. And so they're going to replace our homes, or whatever happens, or our lives, or whatever happens, if that wall did break and come down. That's a good question. Until you've been through flood, you do, and I've been through flood, yes, you do worry about those things. How safe is it? And that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. Anyone else like to comment? Who's going to report on this part?
I know, I'm leaving the safety of the back row.
You need to hand your notepad over.
I know. Okay, Carrie Dorman, resident of Yountville. First, I just want to say thank you. Steve, Joe, and Abstentia Nathan, trying to take over the back row. Staff has been very helpful, because there were a lot of emails flying around. Some started by me, some just came across my desk. The information is great.
Carrie, I'm sorry, could you move that microphone so everybody can get it home?
The presentation tonight has been great, thank you. And I do appreciate the council moving this up so that we could all be here and get home to our nests now that it's dark at 5:30. So thank you. And I know there have been a lot of specific questions, and I'm sure, myself included, there will be more specific questions. I had, my overarching question was the funding, because as I understand it, this is a town facility. The town has responsibility for it. The town is liable for its operation, for its maintenance. I understand, I think I understand, from what I heard tonight, that the funding, the town may take the 313 from FEMA and then make up any shortfall to make up the 580 or 604, whatever the bid, the actual price turns out to be. But my question is, and I know y'all don't have to answer it tonight, so it's just really a comment, that it seems this is no different from any other town facility. It's a Hopper Creek, it's a park, it's a redoing of the sewer system, it's resurfacing the streets. It's necessary and advisable for the safety and health of the residents, and it seems like even if the town has to fund the whole thing, that that's a responsibility of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay, thank you. Any further comment from Steve or staff as it relates to any of those comments? I would say that, you know, assuming the scenario that Town Manager presented, the council would be addressing funding on December 1. And as I stated earlier, typically FEMA money comes in after you've paid for it. And so the, if the council takes the action to either fill the gap in the estimate and the real bid, we would be filing for reimbursement by FEMA, but we would have the understanding that that may not happen, either in its entirety or at all. And so that will be part of the discussion that we have to have about, do we agree that it's the responsibility of the town? I'm not going to comment now, because it's not appropriate for us to comment on that until it's an agendized item. But watch for us up to, you know, leading up to December 1, we may or may not know for sure. That's a projected date, just like November 17th was. Things do change. We have to agendize items 10 days ahead of time. Sometimes these decisions don't come in in time for somebody to be agendized. We understand the timeliness of this. Even though we've had very little rain so far, we want to be prepared for, you know, worst-case scenarios, not, not best-case scenarios. So please understand that. We're all very sensitive to it. We all have family, friends, that are impacted by the safety and security of the flood wall. So if there are any other comments from the council, but I think you can anticipate hearing more about this either on December 1st or whenever we are able to take action. So with that, you're all welcome to stay all night. Please do. Keep Carrie company in the back. But otherwise, we're going to move ahead with our consent calendar and the other items that we have business tonight. We aren't offended if you leave, but if you do, please do so quietly and knowing that we're going to continue on. But thank you very much for coming and sharing your thoughts. We'll move right ahead to the consent calendar. I know that our town attorney has asked that we pull Item 6C for explanation, so I'll, I'll ask if there's action to be had on Items 6A and B of the consent calendar.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendars, Items A and B.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So let's go to Item 6C. Town Attorney.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this was to be the second reading and approval for adoption of an amendment to the Yountville municipal code adding provisions regulating wireless communication facilities. So we discussed it more in depth at the last meeting. This was just the second reading and approval. But we received by email today a letter from Law Firm of McKenzie and Alberton, representing Verizon Wireless. And they had a number of comments to make about the proposed ordinance and requested that the town remove it from consent and allow for further discussion. So in response to that, we decided to go ahead and pull the item for discussion. I can tell you that I've read this through a couple of times, this letter. Also, our wireless communication facility expert in our law firm, Matt Summers, read it, and we discussed it this afternoon. My team feels there's no reason to reconsider any of the provisions in the proposed ordinance. But I'm prepared to discuss the letter in depth if any of you have any questions, or if any members of the public do, about the letter, its contents, and its relationship to the ordinance. I can tell you that, just by way of background, the ordinance was developed based on models from Calabasas in Southern California, which is one of my firm's clients. We developed a more lengthy version for them, which we pared down somewhat for Yountville. We also borrowed heavily from Atherton's ordinance for its stealth requirements, because they have a very, very, I guess you could say restrictive requirement on wireless facilities being camouflaged. They don't allow anything that isn't camouflaged. So we borrowed a little bit from there as well. Those are the two sources for the ordinance. Interestingly enough, we got a very similar letter in 2012 with respect to the Calabasas ordinance. The same law firm made comments on that one. So to some degree, they have had a hand in drafting Yountville's ordinance through that process. I suppose that's, that's the gist of what I wanted to let the council know. But if you have any specific questions or would like me to go through it in depth, I'd be happy to do that.
And do we, I'll first ask. Any specific questions from council?
I do.
Councilwoman Doris Becker, and then Jerome.
Yes, I read through the letter from their, their law firm. And what I really need to know is, they referenced a couple of times that the, that our ordinance, as we've drafted it, is in conflict with federal law and also state law, and that concerns me very much. Plus, Verizon is a wealthy organization that can afford a lot of lawsuits, and I don't want us to become entangled with that. So I guess my first question is, though, have you, you know, are you confident that we are not in conflict with any federal or state laws?
I am, yes. So to answer this point very directly, their first paragraph does indeed say, well, it says three things. One, the ordinance would benefit from industry input. That's a pretty, pretty familiar refrain. Second, it's in conflict with the Federal Telecommunications Act. And third, it conflicts with state law with respect to Verizon's access to the rights-of-way. However, when you get really into the meat of the letter, they don't actually identify any true conflict. So with respect, for example, to federal law, the gist of their argument is, there are two terms which federal courts use when interpreting the Federal Telecommunications Act, least intrusive means and significant gap. These are things that basically, the, you can't deny the permit if they can, if the applicant can show that these exist, that first of all, there's a significant gap, and that this is the least intrusive means of correcting it. So what the ordinance does is it requires the applicant to actually prove those things before the town. And it does that for a couple of reasons. First, this allows the town to create an evidentiary record in the event that, for example, you want to deny the permit. You have the evidence provided by the applicant themselves, which you presume would be the best evidence available. And that's what you could take to the judge to interpret the law. So it allows us to have the first pass at, at developing that record. The second point I want to make is that this isn't inconsistent with federal law. It is precisely consistent with federal law. We require exactly what federal law requires, no more, no less. So there is a floor that federal law creates, and the town is adopting that as the actual standard for what applicants must prove. One other point to make on this, the ordinance at Section A 4 and 5 ties the interpretation of our terms to federal case law. So the point that McKenzie and Alberton are making here is that these are terms that are interpreted by federal judges, not by the town of Yountville. Interestingly enough, that's what our ordinance says as well. You interpret the ordinance in light of federal case law. So we're entirely consistent with the law. We're even consistent with how they're interpreting it. I'm a little concerned that they may not have read the ordinance quite carefully enough to get that, but I'm 100% confident that there's no conflict there. The second conflict they identify was state law and the rights-of-way. This would be on page 4 of their letter, alleged conflict, I should say. First of all, they're concerned about Section F-18, which essentially requires that your, your radio cabinets, your ancillary facilities, that don't, it's not just the antenna, but the, maybe the booster, or the, the other elements of your wireless communication tower, or router, or whatever it is that you've got, that those be either small enough to fit on the pole like everybody else's, or if they're big, they have to be housed in a little structure or put underground. Those are your choices. So according to the ordinance at F-6, if it's the same size and shape roughly as other communication facilities, it goes right on the pole, like everything else. If it's any bigger than that, it either has to go into a cabinet or go underground. And this is a common provision. Again, we've seen this in a number of ordinances from jurisdictions around the state. It's in a couple of our other clients' ordinances as well. And it's not inconsistent with access to the right-of-way. The point that they're making here is that we can't treat some utilities different from others. Firstly, I think that's not quite the correct reading of the law. I think that you have to treat a telephone company differently from a gas or an electric company. They're different facilities. They require different machines. So they are treated a little differently, and that's just a fact of the industry. But each communication facility is subject to the exact same rules, and that's what the ordinance says. So at F-6, if it's the same as your regular telephone company, it can go on the pole. If it's got to be bigger, it's got to go into a little box, or it's got to go underground. It's not an unreasonable request. And again, it's fairly common as far as other jurisdictions go. So those were their two main provisions in terms of, or arguments in terms of conflict with law.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
And so in the case of Atherton, did this law firm come after them after they passed the, the ordinance?
That I don't know, but we borrowed Atherton's camouflage language mostly. So in terms of the, the, the facilities requirements, the undergrounding, the separate housing, that's coming out of the Calabasas model. And they didn't go after Calabasas, as far as I know. This was just a comment letter, pretty similar to the one you see here, although slightly different. But there was no legal action, as far as I know.
They did say that in using, by defining these federal case law terms and employing them, employing them in findings and standards for a wireless facility permit, the proposed ordinance attempts to create a new hurdle out of the federal protection. Is that true? Or is it, as you said, it's just the same as the federal?
It does, to some degree, create a requirement out of the federal protection. So they're not entirely wrong about that, but there's nothing wrong with doing that. So the federal protection says you've got to show, or if you can show A and B, then you can have your permit. Well, we say you have to show A and B. There's nothing inconsistent about that. But it also is correct, I think, to say that it adds a requirement that the feds do not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Jerome?
Thank you. You've answered all my questions as well.
Any other questions? I'm guessing we don't have a representative from McKenzie and Alberton here, or do we? I didn't think so. Any member of the public like to speak on this item? Billy? You're not obligated to.
Billy Hewitt, and I, Landy Way. I have a couple of questions. Is it necessary that we have these towers, these antenna? Is it necessary?
Ask questions, and then we'll answer them all at the end.
Okay, that's, that's question one. Are there any emissions that are sent out from these antenna towers? And is this something we sought, or the company that installs the antenna came to us wanting to sell? I just want to know what, what's the advantage? I mean, there's so much technical aspect to it. I understand the camouflage, which is great. But what I'm more concerned about are some of the radioactive waves. Some of the things we don't really know the answers to, and I don't expect fully scientific answers. But those are just some questions I have.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And some of that we did discuss when we had the first reading that was presented a few weeks ago, but I would ask staff to go ahead and address those anyway.
Now?
Yes, please.
Sure. The first question about, I think, is aimed at asking whether it's necessary to have cell towers in town. But I might want to clarify that this is an ordinance that is intended to restrict the placement of cell towers. So that what the ordinance does is it prevents one from being able to put one up on one's property wherever they like. So without an ordinance in place, an individual could theoretically put a cell tower in their backyard if they wanted to, and they'd be subject only to the basic permitting rules of the town. This ordinance prevents folks from doing that and gives a fairly strict regulatory framework for how they can apply for a permit, what they can apply for, what they can't, and then how we process it.
So if I can just clarify that a little bit from our last conversation, is it fair to say we are being proactive because we have been approached by businesses, and we've also had our own desire to create this opportunity? But your, your evaluation was that we didn't have sufficient language in place to regulate it?
That's right. So that's the second part of the answer, is that several companies have approached the town to, to put these in, either on town property. I guess none, none have approached about putting them in on private property. But the concern was, if we don't get out ahead of this and put a structure in place, then that's going to be their next step. So they'll come to the town first and say, "We want to put them all up and down Washington Street." And then when the town says no, then they'll go to the, all the property owners and try to get a lease or an agreement to stick them up on top of the buildings. So this was an attempt to get out in front of that potential possibility. And so I guess the, the other part of the answer, too, is you've asked, is it necessary to have cell towers? The answer may be yes, it may be no, but what's important about the ordinance is that it does require a showing of some necessity before someone could put them in. And that, that I think is an important point, that that question will be asked and will be addressed in, in conjunction with any permit application that comes forward. Is that sufficiently answered the question to the councils?
I believe so.
Okay. The, the second question was about emissions from the towers, and I take that to mean a concern about the health effects of these towers in general. Unfortunately, under federal law, this is one thing that the town cannot regulate, is the RF frequency or any kind of radiation or, or health effects and concerns. That's something that the feds have, have preempted. So in our regulations, we can regulate aesthetics, we can regulate structural safety, we can regulate placement in the rights-of-way, but we can't put any restrictions on RF or radio frequency or, or any of those emissions or health concerns. That's strictly a federal thing. So as long as they're compliant with federal standards, we would have to be okay with that.
But that also speaks to our desire to limit the, the number of these. If there is, in fact, difference of opinion about the impact... If there is, in fact, difference of opinion about the impacts of radio frequencies, part of the goal of this ordinance is to minimize those potential impacts by minimizing the number of sites that would be usable.
That's a true statement. So the ordinance, because it requires a showing of necessity to some degree, once the town finds the right structures to go in, it immediately becomes much more difficult for anyone else to come in and try to put a Me Too tower in. So if, for example, we had a couple of towers in place, then all of a sudden, somebody else trying to come and get a permit, or trying to get one attached to a utility pole, it would become much more difficult for them to do so. That would in turn limit the number of these things emitting radiation or whatever it is they might be emitting, I am not an engineer, so I don't know, but it would limit the number of them in town, and that would potentially address the health concern as well, as well as aesthetic concerns and everything else. So to the extent the community is concerned with cell towers, I think that this is about as restrictive as we can be in terms of really controlling what goes into the town and where. And then the final question, did we want this, or did the companies ask for it? There's no question the companies do not want this. In fact, this letter from McKenzie and Alberton is Exhibit A for the fact that Verizon is not happy with these restrictions. Their primary message to us is you should have asked us first, and I'm sure that the input from the industry would have been to relax this standard, relax that standard, why do you need everything to be camouflaged, couldn't we just put in a giant structure in the middle of town? The companies do not really like this ordinance so much. This was a response to their request to put in towers, rather than a request from them to adopt an ordinance. So I think that that's how I would put this into context.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other questions or comments from the council? Is there a motion to be had on Item 6C?
I'll move to approve Item 6C.
I'll second it.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, that passes unanimously, thank you very much. And thank you for the clarification and the explanations, Mike, that was very helpful.
My pleasure.
We have already canceled the presentation, postponing that to another meeting, so we're going to move on to our public hearing on the use permit amendment for Napa Style. We'll start with the staff report.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you a request by Napa Style to amend the use permit for the space, and that use permit was originally approved back in 2008, and it included several components of the use which were centered around a retail use, and the approved retail items were mainly associated with the catalog business that was connected with the Napa Style, and that represented approximately 65% of the total retail offerings in the store, the other 35% represented food items, and they had such items, or they do have items such as oils and vinegars, and salts and spices, and pastas, and a wide variety of food items. Under the amendment requested tonight, they seek to shift that balance so that there is approximately 65% food-related items, and to reduce the traditional retail to about 35%, and that would include kitchen and home decor and entertaining-type items. The goal is to highlight the food and what they call an experienced-based retail model that will be focused on fresh foods, and there will be a tasting kiosk or area in the store where guests can sample the different conserves, and fruit paste, and butters, and different, the different items that are available. And since they are to be seasonally made, they will be of limited quantities, and so presumably high demand, so buy it while they last essentially. And that is the new, the new model that they would like to introduce. The hours of operation would be from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which is consistent with existing retail hours, and while we do see the shift in the retail offerings, they are your basic retail items that are permitted in the primary commercial zoning district, and so while they are different, it's essentially like-for-like. This rendering shows the new layout of the store, and you will see these different tables and bookcases for the display of all these different items, really in the main central area. A new item that the applicant is seeking approval of is a pastry counter, shown here on the right-hand side, and this is located toward the rear door that opens up onto the back patio. And the idea is to offer fresh pastries that would be made and delivered from Bouchon along with coffees and other drinks.
Bottega.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's terrible, I'm sorry. Bottega, of course. I'm thrown now.
So is Chef, I think. Pastry counter.
Pastry counter. Would be open from 7:00 a.m. till 10:00 a.m. when the store opens, and it would really fill a gap where we don't have a variety of places offering these food items. So it extends the hours of operation for the business, but is otherwise consistent with basic retail. Another item of the approved use is wine tasting, and it's shown here on the left-hand side, and wine tasting is a component of the amended use as well. However, it would also include a blend-your-own-wine experience, and it all goes into that experiential nature of this food model. A new element would be proposed beer tasting and the associated beer production on-site, and the beer production would be ancillary to the main food uses on the property, and tied to the ABC use permit, and it would occupy a small, about 150-square-foot area at the front of the building. The applicant is proposing to remove the restroom, the men's restroom that's located at that southeast corner, and then to convert the remaining restroom in that area to a unisex restroom, and there are other restrooms located nearby at the back of the marketplace that would serve the restroom demand of this business and other businesses in that V Marketplace Another component of the approved use is what was termed a deli in the original approval, and it was for the made-to-order sandwiches and salads, soups and other items, along with beer and wine and other beverages, and that is also a component of this proposal. The applicant is seeking to increase the number of seats, and this shows the seating layout where there would be 22 indoor seats, 80 outdoor seats, and staff is also counting 29 standing seats at each of the bars, the wine and the beer tasting, as well as the panini area, because these areas can accommodate bodies. Staff calculated that number of seats according to a parking standard of one space for five unserviced seats, and there are ample overflow spaces in the V Marketplace lot. Even once we account for about the 20 spaces needed for this use, there's close to 50 extra spaces that can be used for other development or other use on that property. And the V Marketplace property is really uniquely situated where they have these large lots, they have these joint shared uses, so an expansion in the number of seats to the degree we see here is not a concern to staff. Let me see. And so that really represents the core of the retail use, all those different elements, and it's really in keeping with the retail use in the primary commercial zoning district, impacts to the hours and the parking are met on this property, and we're recommending approval. There is a second component of the use, and it is the event component. And the existing permit allows up to three special events of 200 people per year, and it defines special events as those events that occur outside of the normal retail hours of the business, or those that exceed the occupancy of the retail component of the business, or which are these private event, by invitation-only events. And so it was envisioned that those were three large events on the property. Since Bottega was approved, they've been conducting many smaller special events in the space, and I don't want to call them special because they're really part of the business model, and they occur frequently on a weekly basis, and they're also tied to the food use of the property. So the applicant has submitted two different calendars for the uses held on-site, both indoors and outdoors, and we see there's a little over 70 indoor events and a little over 50 outdoor events, and we've learned that these are really sort of private receptions and dinners, like rehearsal dinners and birthday parties. They also are meetings from time to time, and they generally occur between 6:00 and 11:00, and that's after Napa Style closes, although occasionally they start a little And these are all coordinated through the master event calendar for the vintage estates properties, and that's because many of the attendees at these events are staying in the guest hotels, but also because they have the barrel room and the events pavilion, and because of the activity on the site, it really needs to be coordinated, and the calendaring of events seems to be working well. These events have been occurring for years, that's partly due to the fact that the area is tucked behind on the V Marketplace property, so it's distant from lodging and residential uses. In fact, in all the times they've been operating, we haven't received a single complaint. And so the way staff has looked at these events is that they really shouldn't be termed special events, they don't rise to the 200-person level, most of them are probably 60-person or smaller, although they can go up to about 90 people. And, gee, lost my train of thought. So, the way we compared it in the staff report is these are similar to events that are held at restaurants, and restaurants may close off a section of their dining room for a special party, and you still see the number of people, you still see the service of food, and that's similar to what you see here. In this case, there's no overlap of uses in the sense that Napa Style is closed, and there's also ample parking for this need because the event component of this, of use, requires two less parking spaces than the basic retail use during the day. So, again, I would call attention to the fact that the V Marketplace property is unique, and it can accommodate an event of this nature, but I also want to note that it's associated with a food use and a limited-service restaurant, and an event like this at a wine tasting room simply couldn't be accommodated because the number of seats couldn't be dealt with according to the parking standard, and it also doesn't have this distant sort of protected location, so that there are no impacts. So we are recommending approval of the whole host of uses as amended, subject to the conditions of approval that we have recommended, and I'm happy to discuss any of those conditions with you.
Thank you. Other questions to the staff report?
I have one.
Councilor Doherty?
And it's a clarification, so you were saying that as of now, they do three large events a year, and I noticed in the report, it said that there will only be two of the scheduled events for parties of 100 or greater in number, so are they coming down in the number of large events like that?
No, and I actually forgot to mention that, but they are also seeking to hold special events in addition to these private events that I just went into detail about, and these special events would be from 100 to 300 people on five different occasions a year. They're really intended for larger parties, maybe associated with the grand fondo, or harvest dinner parties, or something really large. So in that case, they're seeking two more than they're currently permitted, but they would require a special event permit from the Parks and Rec Department, and we would also have an opportunity to attach conditions, let's say they wanted to have live music, and we were concerned about hours, on those larger events, we're probably looking at more impacts. So it's a reason to limit them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Mueller?
Yeah, I have a question about the Nano Brewery. Is this, is there going to be like active fermentation going on? Is this in any way, we don't allow any kind of actual wine-making commercially in town. Can you give us a little more information about what a Nano Brewery is?
Well, it's a very micro-scale brewery that would occur in three small tanks that are on property. It's more a way to display and highlight the brewing process that they've indicated is a low-intensity type use, and I'll allow them to elaborate more on that when they get to it.
That'd be fine, thanks.
Isn't it true that there's one other location in town where that does exist?
Yeah.
At Redwood?
At Redwood, they have a small brewery.
Those tanks happen to be downstairs, so it's not a first time, potentially.
That's right, I forgot about that, thanks.
Any other questions to the staff report? One thing I just wanted, two questions I have very quickly, Senator. One, at the end of Page 4, you talk about the open space and the patio being considered open space, but the way I'm interpreting this, Napa Style does not have to provide specific open space for it, it's the overall vintage estates property that has an open space requirement, and it fits that requirement with or without the patio being open to the public?
Without the patio included, they exceed the 20%
Still do.
For the property, and they have so many different large areas that go toward that standard.
Okay. The other one is it relates to, there's already been a separation of the Chirillo Family Wines to another retail space, and then adding the brewery component, is there any concern about alcohol licenses that are affected by that? You've still got wine tasting in Napa Style, you now have Chirillo wines in another location, and then adding a brewery component, is there any concern that?
No. The ABC has a whole host of different licenses. This one allows brewing to be conducted on-site, and also allows the on-sale consumption of beer and wine associated with that, so it's a different license held for this specific site. I believe at the tasting room, it's an O2 duplicate license, and this is clearly a different license.
And would they then be required to have indoor consumption only, where it's in line of sight of staff, like a wine tasting room would be? Do you know?
I believe so, yeah.
So I'm thinking, can somebody get a beer inside and go out in the patio if they're outside the line of sight of an employee?
Well, as long as it's under control of the business, and it would be ABC that's looking to determine whether they have sufficient control of the area.
So that's really not our purview? They have to stay within compliance of the ABC?
Well, it's of interest, but they have to be in compliance with ABC.
Okay, those are my questions for now. So I'll open the public hearing and invite, I see we have the team in the back, please come forward and present yourself.
Welcome. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here. Jan Fector, V Marketplace, 6525 Washington Street. And the reason that I'm getting up first, they are the applicant, we just happen to be the property owner, we're delighted that the chef sees the need so quickly to make some improvements that will better the business, so we're all for that, obviously. There is one question that the partnership still has at the moment, and that's the removal of the one men's handicap-accessible restroom that we require for the use to include the small brewery. Didn't seem to be a problem months ago, all of a sudden, they have a little bit of a question, so I think they were looking maybe for some guidance from the council, and if the council didn't have a major issue, that they would consider it further. So it's just the council's wisdom that they are looking for. They also happen to be a little preoccupied at the moment, and this was not a priority for them to spend time with me on, so we didn't get to have, you know, a face-to-face meeting and discuss in depth losing one toilet. So what we plan to do, and again, as the onsite manager for a number of years, I really don't see an issue personally with losing that one men's restroom, because we would then make the women's restroom that's at Napa Style and handicap-accessible a full-on family suite, which is actually, there is a demand for that, because, you know, families like to go in together and take their little ones, and there's a changing station in there, and that's been limited to the woman. So we're actually causing equal rights to happen now with changing of babies, that the men would be able to go in and change the baby, and Sandra would love that, I know. If you have any other questions, I'm going to let Brooks and Michael take it from here, unless you have a question for me.
Well, I will ask if we can get staff's comment on, is there a concern about the loss of ADA-accessible restroom?
No, the restroom will still be ADA-accessible, the retail- The retail component of the business requires one space, and that's met at that northeast unisex restroom. When it converts to the event dining, they require two men's and three women's, and those are accounted for in that one space I just mentioned, but also in the restrooms that are on the backside of V Marketplace. So they meet the standard.
As well as the pavilion. The pavilion has a full host of restrooms, and when we came to council for the construction of the pavilion, it was a requirement that those restaurants, restrooms stay open during the day.
Okay.
As well as for events, Bottega has fully accessible restrooms as well.
Right.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of your team? Now would be the time. Chef, yes, welcome. Almost didn't recognize you without your coat.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to be back in front of everybody. First off, thank you for the opportunity you've given us since 2008, albeit 2008 wasn't the best year in the world. It was for us. And having been a resident and a business owner in San Elena for so long, you've done a phenomenal job at recreating the center of the Napa Valley in a heartbeat that runs strong throughout the world. Whatever's going on, north or south, can compete with the village that you have. When we look at our business, when I look at our businesses and what we do, what are we great at, what are we good at, what do we want to do? It's usually secondary to what's needed. What was the guest saying? Actually, we'll see as we look to grow in the next couple of years, it's what's missing, what can make an experience better. When we look at something like the Grand Fondo and celebrating cycling and giving somebody an alternative event to come on a weekday when there's less traffic, be able to stay in the Napa Valley, that's one of the guiding lights of what we think our 2.0 can be, is a hub for that activity, and a place for people to be able to stop and start and get traffic twice, and let it be something that's very natural. There's no place to do that today in here. But from a store standpoint, it's not so much a change as it is a asking back for the original vision, that some of it was toned down a little bit originally, and coming back to its original intent. In any business, after a number of years, it used to be ten, now it appears to be seven, you want to do a reinvent. It's not the easiest thing in the world, retail in the Napa Valley, for sure. We've had a really nice run. The combination of effects between Bottega using it in the off-hours, really allow it to work, otherwise, just so you know for your own fiscal sense, it doesn't. It's very, very difficult. You want to create something that's inspiring. For Yountville, to have a place that's unique, to create opportunities and experiences unique just to here, that aren't being rolled out, aren't being done anywhere else, aren't in a catalog, that the, when we look at, we say 6535, it's not just in item count, it's more in revenue. We expect that the food revenue will go up with this reinvent, but the number of items will be, the retail items will represent and tell the story of beer-making and consumption, wine on this side, and all the food products that we make. Also look at, and listening to the guests, what opportunities are there in the morning? Wish you were open for breakfast. Wish there was something else to do. The hotels offer a good amount of breakfast with the room. I think there's an experience that's beautiful back there, and a nice adjunct, and it creates zero, zero issue as far as traffic goes. On the licensed side, as long as we're serving food, and it's not an official tasting room, you're able to get a glass of wine, you're able to get a small, small pour of wine. Where you go with that wine and/or beer is up to you from the ABC standpoint, so it is a different license. A small adjustment to the early comment, we've had tasting there for a long time. We're going back to the original approval. How we started was, Napa Style would buy wine, from me and other vintners, and resell it. When Chiarella Vineyards took over that area to really build, build a tasting culture inside the store, one of the things we had to give up is being able to sell a beer or anybody else's wine because of the duplicate O2. So this allows us to do a couple of things. Expand a beautiful footprint of inside V Marketplace with a new opportunity that's going to be a lot of fun to develop, but the use is consistent. There's a couple more seats, but the use is consistent. The, I'd say 75, 80% of the products there will be developed by us, and exclusive only to us. The experience is unique unto itself, the products and services. When you grow a catalog business, at some point it gets to the size that either you can't make it all, or it's not feasible to make it all. For us, it's deeply important that people come and they see something they can't get anywhere else in the country. And that, to me, is a guiding light for what we're doing inside this reinvention. Through the process, we will rebrand, and if everybody behind me and in front of me can be so kind as to not spill the beans to the press, this is the hardest thing in the world to come.
We are streaming live on the internet.
I understand that. I understand that. I will get my butt whooped in the morning for who we didn't tell. Something else to do, other than just to drink wine, a lower alcohol version of that, and have a more diverse environment inside the Napa Valley that's not all about one thing. In our sustainable means of this, all of the byproduct of the brewery is turned into food products that we're already developing, as a 360 look at, kind of paying it forward to the environment, as will a lot of the rest of our products we're developing. So, we're super excited about it. We hope you guys are too, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Are there questions at this point? None at this point. Thank you.
On a side note, just so you know, the first time I came up or been in San Elena in front of the council so many times, I came with, like, a little nervous, guns blazing, and I don't know if Steve, if you were here then, or not. Somebody at some point stands up, says, "No, no, stop. We like it, it's good." It's a pleasure, you're thoughtful about it, and you build a beautiful city. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That's two-thirds of the team. Is that it? Okay. Anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Questions or comments? Seeing no more, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing part of this, and invite council discussion and potential action. Anyone like to begin?
I like it.
Councilmember Mueller, would you like to begin?
You know, I wish you guys the best. Something, you know, yet, Yountville is going to try to do something unique again, and you're the first, and I wish you great luck and success.
Councilmember Durham?
I appreciate the evolution. We've been there from the beginning since they got here, and I, we all have our opinions about tourism and about local serving and community here, and I appreciate the fact that people are willing to evolve and move forward and continue to move forward. So I'm very excited about this, so thank you.
Councilmember Doran Becker.
Well, I've been so hoping that we would one day get an Italian deli. So, I like it.
Vice Mayor?
That was simple. I'll tend to agree with all of my prior colleagues. Specifically, what's of interest to me, and I think to this committee, is the things that I'm hearing in general are that there'll be a little more that's accessible to the general public. I mean, everyone can walk down the street and see the line, and in fact, people in this room have talked about the line outside of the single operating bakery at Seven, which I run into many of our colleagues on this podium or dais on, on multiple occasions, it'll be nice to have alternatives. I know that there are others, and this will be another welcome one. Who can argue with a brewery in the middle of the Napa Valley? If you aren't aware, to make really fine wine, it takes a lot of beer. With that said, I feel really comfortable that this will be a successful project, and again, I think the evolution and the progression of what we're trying to accomplish in our small community by encouraging pioneering efforts and activity is one that we should continue to consider. Certainly, we have a responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll agree with my colleagues. One of the things that I was most impressed by is creating an experience-based retail opportunity, because those of us, and I think this speaks a little bit to the vice mayor's comments, those of us that live here, and we go in every so often, and you have retail products that we see, and we see again, and we see again, and we have that opportunity, but for us, that experience isn't as fresh as it is for visitors that come once or twice a year, or however many times. This provides an opportunity for it to be fresh every time we walk in the door. And I know that that's one of the things you're looking to create. I'm not concerned about the private events, the special events, because this property is a very unique property in that you, you only impact yourselves, basically, and the highway. And I don't think the highway is going to have a problem with this. But I do, I love the diversity of the experience that you're bringing into the space. Originally, I was a little bit concerned about the loss of that restroom, but apparently the secret is going to get out about the two restrooms on the backside of V Marketplace, the front building, that never have people in them, as well as the ones as part of the pavilion. So I feel like it's a very reasonable connection to this business and the property as a whole. So, I can fully support it and look forward to seeing that transition, and it sounds really exciting to me. So, with that, is there a motion to be had? I have a feeling, I know where we're headed, but.
I.
Councilmember Doran Becker.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 153308, approving the use permit amendment for Napa Style 2.0 to modify retail wine and beer tasting, private events, add a Nano Brewery and 125 unserviced seats for the property located at 6525 Washington Street, APN 03633009.
Second.
We didn't even get a second in there.
I'm just slow on the uptake tonight.
Second by Councilmember Mueller.
polite.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It also takes a lot of tequila.
That's a different license.
I know. It's Bottega license.
Yes, so we are going to now move on to Item 9A. It sounds related to a topic we just had a little while ago, but it is unique and different. So if we can go ahead and start with the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I do want to preface that this item is really an initial presentation with a number of options, and staff will be seeking some feedback and direction. One of the first things that I want to point out, though, as you've learned in our earlier discussion, over the last several years, town staff has been approached by a number of cellular antenna service providers. In the presentation today, and I'm going to do a brief introduction and then turn it over to a representative from EnerSphere, Kimberly Hart, and then I will bring it back. The reason we're going to do that is in part, part of this is an introduction exploratory conversation to see if the council has any interest in working further with EnerSphere as a potential solution. EnerSphere is a stealth or camouflage cellular antenna provider. By way of background, we have been approached by four operators, two of which are definitely not stealth, and their business model would place devices on existing, potentially PG&E, AT&amp;T telephone poles, and/or potentially streetlights if we were to allow them. So I just kind of want to set a framework. This has not been something that has been moving at a rocket's pace, but the council has had very, 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 and I'm going to stress, very preliminary interest in what might it take to perhaps look at a town-wide Wi-Fi network, or some public hotspots. So, part of this is an educational discussion, because an improved infill cellular antenna system could support all of those. I do want to point out that the industry is telling us, based on our voracious consumer demand for bandwidth, by use of all the increasing, that they need to do something different. And that is not a unique experience to Yountville, it is something that's being played out all over, and also, one of the reasons that we have been, as Town Attorney Cobden indicated, we've chosen to get into a more restrictive, the industry's lobbied very well to try to limit local control. So, what I am going to do is, I mentioned, we've had some very preliminary discussions on a concept that could be appropriate for Yountville, and we're looking for council feedback, alternatives, but what I am going to do is introduce Kimberly Hart from EnerSphere, let her give a presentation, and then I'll bring it back to some discussion about if you were interested in a potential opportunity to look at a lease option agreement, what that structure might look like, what it means and what it does not mean. Because for the audience, I also want to indicate, there is nothing here, if the council were to approve entering into a lease option, that would allow for us to work with EnerSphere. They would still have to come back with a formal application on the actual sites, details, and all of that. So I do want to get that out in front of everybody, that this is really an opportunity to provide a framework, if there's an interest, and how that might work. So with that, Kimberly.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'd like to share a 30-page presentation that I prepared for, I'm just joking. I tried to keep it simple. I am representing EnerSphere and am the international vice president of the company. We have been working with municipalities, not only here in the United States, but also globally, and I have some personal experience to share. I just want to go through these slides quickly, and then I want to share just some personal experience in reference to the need to increase capacity and coverage here in Yountville, and also within the valley area. So, I'll just signal to you, is that okay? So, EnerSphere is a company that is developing and manufacturing infrastructure for both utility and mobile communications. We.
Sorry.
Oh. It's okay.
There's one slide. That's all that's showing.
Okay.
There's pages, but they're blank.
We lost 29 pages.
Oh, shoot. Okay. So, I'm just going to speak this evening. We are, as I was mentioning, in the business of developing and leasing and selling infrastructure, both utility and telecommunications. We are, e-pole, I think we have, or there's, at least if we could pull up just a single image that we've provided.
Yeah, we have some attachments that should be able to help.
I think you have quite a few attachments, yeah. So, the infrastructure is a composite non-conductive pole with a small-sound cell antenna attached at the top that basically provides cellular coverage up to half a mile. And, as I mentioned, you know, we're working with municipalities, both nationally and internationally, to help establish a solution for a global issue, which is capacity and coverage. And being that we are, and just to come back to your question, is this needed? We are in, actually, an international issue and concern with capacity and coverage in the cellular space, because there's an anticipation over the next three years of an 800% growth in data demand. We've become a very video-centric population. People have multiple devices, so there is a very large demand on coverage and capacity. And until we get an image up here, I just wanted to share some personal experience. I actually came to Napa and to Yountville about a year ago. My husband has been the sommelier for the Augusta National for about eight years, and we started looking at the Napa area to relocate. And, so, we came here a year ago, and I, at the time, was in the middle of negotiating an international contract, and was highly dependent on my coverage, with my cellular coverage. And unfortunately, there are many holes in this valley, and it's been very overlooked by all, I would say, majority of the operators. And it actually became quite humorous, because he was visiting these wineries, which, you know, on the way to these wineries, there's very little coverage, and God forbid you get lost. But I was dropping calls and hanging up on people left and right. And we also, I wanted to just share, we relocated in July, and my husband has taken a job as sommelier at the French Laundry, and we actually lived across the street for about a month and a half, in the greenhouse right across the street. And in order to maintain my business, obviously, again, depending on my cellular coverage, I was having to come across a half, in the greenhouse right across the street. And in order to maintain my business, obviously, again, depending on my cellular coverage, I was having to come across, you actually have quite, AT&amp;T has pretty good coverage over here in the town hall. So I was walking across the street in the morning, all hours, to actually pick up a signal. And so, and just to share another personal story, I actually have a five-week-old baby, and was very pregnant in July when we moved, and decided to take my daughter, and load up our two dogs, and go take a trip to Bodega Bay. And unfortunately, my starter decided to go out in my car, and I was in an emergency situation, I felt, and there was zero coverage. There was absolutely zero signal. And so this, to me, I start, you know, these experiences have made me realize that, you know, there is a need to infill these holes, and also to hold the operators accountable for offering the coverage that is needed. And so, this is an image of our pole. It is a composite non-conductive material that the pole is made out of. It's actually a segmented pole. So for installation purposes, it actually takes about two hours, and two hours, a couple guys, and a bucket truck. And for most infrastructures, including utility poles, it's a pretty lengthy process, and it can be quite disruptive on the city perspective. We have, at the top is our antenna, and as I mentioned, the antenna provides a cellular coverage for up to a half-mile. We're proposing, here in Yountville, to deploy a pilot project, and essentially, if we're looking at, you know, coverage for the entire town of Yountville, you know, it's, we're looking at just a few poles.
I found it.
You did? Oh, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I can keep it, keep it simple. You know, this, if you can see the images down to the right, no, on the presentation, there's actually, in the, in the last part of the presentation, there's some better, or you can enlarge it, that's great. The reason that we've created e-pole is to actually provide a solution that is aesthetically pleasing, and is easy to deploy, is environmentally conscious. We use a maximum, and back to one of your questions, a maximum of two 5-watt radios. The antenna is a tri-sector antenna that is directional, and if you compare the radio frequency of a cellular tower and one of our e-poles, there's a very big difference. I don't want to get into too much into the RF pollution, but obviously, for the general public, it is a concern. And what's happening with cities and towns all over, not only here in the US, but this is also an international issue, is, you know, there is the demand and need for the coverage, so the operators are looking to fill those holes. What's happening is there are a lot of attachments, a lot of foreign attachments to utility poles, light poles, and it's becoming very cluttered, and is actually a very big concern for most cities. So we feel that we offer a solution that is, meets all the safety standards, all the DOT, mobile communication, and utility, both state and federal safety standards. And we offer an opportunity to deploy something that's actually attractive, and both serving for the cities. The proposal that we've presented, and that we've been in discussion with, with both Mike and Steve, is to enter a lease option agreement with the town, more so as a partnership. We did allocate six different locations that we felt would be ideal locations to offer the operators. And coming back to the topic that we were touching on earlier, we are approved by Verizon.
Kimberly, I know you mentioned you don't want to. I think it's really important, from a visual standpoint, with some of the things that you walk through your presentation, so everybody can see it.
Sure. All right, so we can, this is actually an example of an e-pole in a residential area. And the pole, the height of the pole is between 35 and 45 feet. We modeled our pole basically after a typical wooden utility pole. So it is, you know, aesthetically, pretty uniform with the utility poles that run throughout the cities and towns. You can go ahead and skip. We offer both micro and pico cell antennas. The coverage is a little bit different. The size and the design is actually the same as the design that you see in the image. And I think we can just go through, I really just want to go jump to some of the images and just talk to you, the pictures. You can go through. Let's see here. So this is an example of one of our black e-poles. They can be colored and wrapped. We can customize and design the e-pole to fit, and basically fit within the municipality lighting. And we also do add the banded lighting to the poles. If you look to the right, this is an example of what you don't want to be installed in your front, in your front or backyard. These are just examples of similar structures, and obviously, you can see the difference aesthetically. So we can just flip through to the next. These are photoshopped images of a couple of the locations that we looked at quite a while ago during a visit here with Steve. And this pole here to the left is actually a PG&E replacement pole. And as you can see, we can completely replace the wooden electric utility pole at our pole, which is also line strengthening within the utilities, and add all of the equipment back onto the pole. The pole to the right is, you know, this is an example of, you know, the location that we found. And we would also propose with, with our boxes, our boxes have been designed based around the typical approved DOT boxes. That is our radio cabinet, and all of our equipment is concealed, all of our wires, all of our equipment is completely concealed within the pole and the box. We would also propose to install some landscaping, if needed, around the bottom part of the box, as long as it's accessible. If you want, you can flip through to the next one. Oh, excuse me, sorry. So we definitely see the need in the area, and we're seeking to execute this lease option agreement in a matter of a partnership, obviously, working together with the town of Yountville, selecting the sites, approving the color of the pole, and the, any attachments that would want to be included. So that's, thank you. And I'm open to questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for enduring through the technical jigsaw puzzle we drew.
Sure, sure.
Specific questions about the presentation? Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
Sure.
Couple just quick questions, and I'm sure there will be others. So you say you guys are working with other municipalities or agencies internationally. Can you give us, I mean, a couple other names? I mean, obviously, you're working with the town manager and others.
We're working with the entire country of Bogota, Columbia, and we've currently deployed 10 poles, and we're in the process of shipping and deploying multiple others. We're working with multiple operators in Bogota. Right now, we do have an executed lease option agreement with the town of North Augusta, and we're in the process of deploying in also Charleston, South Carolina. We're finalizing an agreement with West Palm Beach, and we have met with multiple towns and cities within the Bay Area, and including San Francisco as well.
Okay, thank you. So, and part of my question, and when you say that, you know, so you guys are, this company's been around for five years? Is that what I read?
Five years.
Five years, okay. And you mentioned something about replacing the P, you know, and I know it's a photoshopped image there. When you say you're replacing the PG&E pole, I guess my question for you is, are you replacing the utility component of that?
No, no. We would, we would actually replace the pole and integrate the utility. This would be a separate relationship with PG&E, with the support of the town of Yountville as well.
Okay, so it's a hypothetical?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. The demand, I understand. How does that pole, because you say you can deploy it in a matter of hours, which, you know, less intrusion is better, but how does it actually physically connect to the ground?
It's actually buried into the ground. And we do install a small amount of cement at the bottom part of the pole, but there is up to three feet buried.
So the cement doesn't cure in two hours? So that's just once the cement and the slab's poured, then your people come out and it takes two hours to install it? Okay. And then lastly, I understand the lease option, or the lease, the lease revenue build-out. How do you guys get paid? So are you getting paid by, by the town for having access to the pole in place? Are you getting paid by the providers who are utilizing the pole to deploy their services, who are getting paid a fee by, I'm trying to understand?
We are paid by the operators. So our, our model, our business model, is we both sell and lease. So some of the operators, we're dealing directly with on specifically selling our poles. In this case, it would actually be a lease, and so we would turn around and lease to the network operator, and then do a revenue share with the town.
Right, so that was my, that's my next question. So let's just assume hypothetically, we say, oh, this is interesting, let's, let's try to take a step forward. You know, my short-term perspective is, one of these poles gets installed, and then Verizon, AT&amp;T, or whomever comes to you and says, wow, we need to have access, because our customers have this, I'll get it wrong, this gap in their service coverage, and we need to, you know, we need to make sure we can get that. Your pole provides the opportunity to provide this service. We're going to pay you X dollars, and then somehow, the town of Yountville, because of this relationship that we have, because we're allowing you to use our space for your pole, is going to get some revenue share back.
Sure.
Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yes.
Sure, when my wife tells me, sure, I know what that means.
Sorry.
It means, you just talked too fast, I didn't understand, or I didn't want to answer you. Okay, I think those are my questions for now.
Yes, this is the business model.
Thank you.
Counselmember Doran Becker?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I would like to follow up on something that Ms. Hewitt brought up, and that is the kinds of emissions that these poles emit.
Well, as I mentioned, and I'm not an engineer, but I did mention the, our focus is emitting low radio frequency pollution, and our radios are 5 watt and maximum of 2. I would be more than happy to provide some additional, some additional, more technical information to the town, that would also offer comparison to, you know, a traditional cellular tower with an e-pole.
I think we need that.
Sure. Yes.
Edit? Any questions? Counselmember Durham?
How many e-poles do you think it would take to make a Yountville, for Yountville to offer townwide Wi-Fi?
Well, we have worked closely with another company that has put together a proposal, and they have suggested that the infrastructure, the actual infrastructure, be utilized, and based on the feedback that I've received, it would be two.
Did you see, excuse me one second. I got a question, so I need to.
So while he's looking, you identified six or seven locations, but you're not proposing six or seven?
It would take two.
So when we're working with the operators, we're offering them various locations, and obviously, based on the RF propagation, and to determine exactly the right location for these poles, we would need to have multiple locations. We could, if we allocated just one location, and then we went back to Verizon and said, here we have, you know, this corner on Washington Street, it would really be based on the demand and the need to lease that antenna in that exact location. So essentially, we're wanting to offer various locations and work together on the propagation to basically serve the need for the operators.
If I may hijack your question again?
You're fine.
I thought you just said that you would need two poles to cover the entire town.
For Wi-Fi. For town Wi-Fi. But we're talking for cellular, yeah.
Cellular, so the same two poles for Wi-Fi could be used as two of the locations for cellular data service.
Exactly.
But you're saying you would need the other locations to, for full, comprehensive coverage of Wi-Fi and all data.
To offer to the operators, as far as options. Essentially, where you would be drawing the most Wi-Fi and needing the most coverage and capacity is really going to be in the highest traffic area. So it would essentially be, and again, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but ideally, it would be in the main busiest part of the downtown area. And those locations, you know, we've, we have selected and tried to look at, you know, a good scenario that would offer the most coverage.
Counselmember Durham, continue, please.
I apologize. I came late to the game today. But this picture, Yountville Community Center, what is, what is the position behind it that says Yountville Wi-Fi?
Yeah, there are two.
It's Vice Mayor Hall's house.
I'm sorry. I'm so, I mean, I, so I'm just trying to understand where they would be, and so I just.
I'll share with you, based on the lease option agreement that we've presented, and the conversations that we've had with both Michael and Steve, we would work directly with the town to determine the best location, the best fit. But we wouldn't, and this is the way that we're working with all cities and towns, is to make the decision to install the poles where it's going to be, you know, aesthetically pleasing for the residents, and offer the best optimum coverage and capacity in Wi-Fi. So that, you know, the lease option agreement would not just be free range of any right-of-way.
The short answer, you see the exhibit that shows six potential sites. It doesn't mean that all six sites are going to be used, and in fact, there could be other sites that are in the right-of-way. The initial assessment was to provide some alternatives. And I would also say, if the council feels that there are some sites that are definitely not interested in using, we need to hear that, and we can look at that.
Well, there are actually seven pins, which I think is what Counselmember Durham is referencing. Two of them kind of on top of each other, the community center and the Yountville Wi-Fi, but there are seven locations identified.
So for example, there, we could be looking at something that would be an additional light pole-type apparatus in the parking lot, or in a couple of locations. As I indicated to you, we've done a very, very preliminary analysis, and it looks like we could probably look at a combination public Wi-Fi and infrastructure system for a cost in the 55, 60,000 range. So that's something, based on council feedback, at some point in time, we may come back with a potential project. So this helps to build the infrastructure that would be necessary for that. So that's why I say, staff's been intrigued, and what we necessary for that. So that's why I say, staff's been intrigued. And what we really kind of want to work on is where the deployment, because for example, these could go along Washington and the more urban areas, you know, we need some feedback to the potential operator. We also need to know, if you're not interested, you need to tell us that. But we do think, I think what I would say is, the industry has identified that there is a service gap here. This is potentially a method that we think is more in keeping with the council's strategic plan than some of those other devices that you saw in the illustration. And that if your feedback was such that you wanted to work, that's what the real interest today would be pursuing or providing some direction to, to work on with that potential arrangement. I do want to stress that they would still have an obligation to complete an application and come back once we actually knew where they wanted to go. And a lease option, basically, for those that may not be familiar, really is an opportunity for them to sort of have first right of refusal to work on all of this and get it going and come back to you.
If I might, then, is, is the discussion to have town-wide Wi-Fi, is the discussion to fill my Verizon cellphone gap throughout the town at my home or what I want to do? Where, you understand what I'm, where do we start? Where, how far do we go?
This, and I think, to be honest, I don't, I say this is an evolving question. The, the first thing is, the infrastructure is needed. We've been approached by, as I said, four different providers looking to represent. And I will indicate that we've been advised that Sprint, anybody that's a Sprint customer like me, T-Mobile, Verizon, are all, and AT&amp;T have all indicated a level of interest in filling a gap. So I think the first thing is simply to meet that additional need. Again, we see some interest in terms of the council's support for technology. And if we were able to have some public free Wi-Fi hotspots deployed throughout the community, we see a need, for example, we are, with your support, we are moving forward with a state-of-the-art Wi-Fi-based meter readings. So I mean, there's some, the short answer to your question is, it leapfrogs our ability to start having a question about that broader town-wide Wi-Fi network. And I'm gonna talk about it both from a public, meaning us as an operator, bandwidth for municipal operations, public safety operations, as well as potentially what the individual may do if that network was supportable. So it, it opens up that conversation. But I do want to stress, right now, the application before you is focused on providing that infill cellular tower. And Kimberly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe your tower is actually designed to support three potential providers?
Two.
Two? Okay, thank you.
Two, but essentially, we're looking at individual operators per pole. So...
And that's partly because the operators don't share well.
And I, I would like to stress that our, our E-pole is completely compliant with the ordinance, the Wi-Fi ordinance that has been in discussion.
When you say one, I understand one provider, but is it that one provider who would do the telephone as well as Wi-Fi?
No, this would, and this is getting into a technical area that I do not want to pretend that I am an expert or as well-vetted. It starts the, the service, the cellular, adequate cellular service potentially allows us to be able to deploy the Wi-Fi. And I'm getting well beyond my capacity.
But that's a hotspot, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's my hotspot that I have.
Exactly.
So, so, sorry.
Just, sorry to jump in. From my understanding with discussions with both Kimberly and David, the CEO, I think he is?
Yes.
The pole has essentially a slot in it that can house a Wi-Fi transmitter. So it, it has capability to host Wi-Fi, but they don't actually provide that service. And just like, you know, the pole is empty and Verizon can come occupy it, so can a Wi-Fi service provider and, and equipment. So the pole itself is equipped for it, but it doesn't come with it. So the lease that...
So they're just bringing the poles?
They're bringing the pole, yeah.
So it's, it's a multipurpose infrastructure that can essentially equip cellular telecommunications, Wi-Fi, security surveillance. We also have proposed, you know, future development and if we're on the topic of smart cities, being able to integrate sensors that actually track and measure traffic. Or, you know, there, there are a lot of other uses. But we're, we're essentially, we're in the space of infrastructure and we have offered and proposed to give the town this infrastructure and then to turn around and lease it back from the town. And if you decide to do Wi-Fi, we've, we do have a strong background in Wi-Fi and have partners with security surveillance, et cetera. So we have offered to support the town in, you know, looking at those options and however we can, can support the town in having the maximum and optimum use of our infrastructure.
Thank you. The reason, thank you. I just want full clarification, because given one of your photos in the presentation, I have a feeling that's why people are in the audience. So I just want to be absolutely clear.
Sure.
On exactly what it can provide. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Questions? Councilmember Muller?
Okay, so if we move forward, we would be approving a resolution that would allow the town manager to go through a lease option. So a package would come back. Still, no money would be spent if we approve the, the resolution, but probably the first package that would come back would cost us forty thousand dollars.
No, there, there is no cost. So we basically are absorbing the cost. We're giving the town the infrastructure. And we also had proposed, because I know there was a question about the color, and we've proposed to pay the additional three thousand dollars to actually match the pole to the existing light poles, which I believe are, they're black. And...
But they're not thirty-five feet tall?
No, they're not. But we, we do try to, you know, we do try to match as much as possible with the existing infrastructure, surrounding infrastructure. And then the, the lease option would allow us to go back to the operators and present the opportunity. And at that point, once we have, which we do have currently operators that are interested in, and essentially for us, this is a pilot, you know, within the town of Yountville. And my mission is actually to use Yountville as an example for all of the surrounding Napa cities. And at that point, look at the opportunity to not only solve the solution with the coverage and capacity, but, you know, establish a new standard within the cities, especially with the concern aesthetically with all of the foreign attachments that are coming.
This is a very complex issue. I think there's a lot really being thrown at us and there's a lot of discussions that we really need to have. I mean, I have, I, I think having some infrastructure in town for at least some Wi-Fi hotspots makes sense. I don't want to have anything at all to do with PG&E. And I don't want it to be a pole, for lots of reasons, but, you know, I think that down the line, I'd like to see all those PG&E poles undergrounded. So I don't want to do that.
Sure, absolutely.
So I'm not, you know, totally anti-PG&E there. Without them, my lights wouldn't go on. So I'm not saying that at all. But I don't really want to use that. And I'm really like streetlights. I really like for the town to own their own streetlights. But we're gonna have a giant pole and a pretty short light. So there's a lot of stuff that, you know, and if we, I'm only gonna have hotspots for, I guess, according to your initial information, AT&amp;T, we're all fine. I mean, I have AT&amp;T, my phone never drops, but, you know, I don't even like to use my cellphone if I don't have to. So, you know, I don't know how we'd go about choosing which ones and, and all that. And I would like a little more detail about the cold zone, so we could, you know, really know that there's, that we want to move forward and, you know, and, and what these are. So I definitely would like some more information.
Okay.
I think that, I think some more technical information as well. I mean...
Sure.
Some of us will glass over and some of us will eat it up and, you know, but that way, you know, more people can kind of ask questions. But certainly, I think it's worth pursuing to some level. I'm just not sure I'm ready for a lease option, because I'm not really sure what the parameters are, you know, that we would all like and what the other people think. But, you know, moving forward with technology, I'm certainly open. So I, I don't know if that gave you any information or not, but those are kind of, it's my assessment.
We're still, we're still at the question asking Stan Jackson.
Well, I don't even know. Those are all the questions I kind of have, so...
Okay. Any other questions from our, Councilor Dornbeck?
So I'd like a clarification also. So you said that they're multi-use, but you said that only one provider would be per pole. So they couldn't, a pole could not be both Wi-Fi and, and cellular phone. Is that correct?
When I mentioned multipurpose, the use of the town, to be able to actually use the infrastructure for its own Wi-Fi network, security surveillance.
Or wanna, wanna, but only one per, one use per pole?
Not, I don't think that's quite...
Is that correct?
My understanding of the poles, if I can jump in, is that they would all be able to have Wi-Fi, they'd all be able to have lights, but, and they'd all be able to have cellular service, but it may be that there's only one cell provider per pole.
One cell provider.
But, but it could have cell, Wi-Fi, lighting, and potentially bearing power lines. It has all those functions, but in terms of the cell aspect, it may be one provider, it may be two.
It could be two. But typically, we're seeing one provider per pole.
I see.
But that would not prevent a Wi-Fi?
No, not at all.
From being on top.
And can you tell me, clarify something else? And is that, I don't understand why that might be considered a stealth. It, it, you know, doesn't look like anything but a pole to me. And so it's, and it's rather ugly. So I don't understand what is the, how, how is it classified as a stealth design?
I can field that one. Under the, the ordinance, stealth would include something that looks like a streetlight. So if it, if it, for example, the, on the example, the picture on the left, that replaces a, a utility pole. So it, it essentially is a utility pole in a different color. Then that's the stealth.
And it would be different if this pole actually had, it was black, and it had your banded street lighting attached. And we would do everything to make it as much uniformed and, and as possible.
I also think, when you look at, Councilmember Dornbeck, stealth, if you remember, there were some pictures that showed a telephone pole with a device of five feet approximately and five feet wide that was glommed on. That is what a lot of, that is another alternative cell tower provider.
I understand, thank you.
And they're coming in. So some cases, these have been done. The unfortunate thing in this particular, the silverish white stands out much more so than the black. So it's, it's a, probably a poor representation, because it is a much more noticeable glaring. But again, aside from hearing the public input, the, the interest that we have from you all is, what are some of the feedback? What are some of the interests?
Well, I'm trying to give you that.
Yep. And if there's some locations that don't interest you, because what I think's also important is, if there is an interest, then staff will continue to work with EnerSphere and the team to narrow it down. If you want to say, let's focus more on the Washington corridor and not Park X. I heard one comment about, don't worry about PG&E. Those are the types of things collectively from all of you that will help us further refine next steps.
All right. Well, then, you, you've given a good segue. I would not like to see any of these in any of our parks in the town.
I'd just like to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're asking questions about the presentation at this point. We're not giving feedback. So I'd like to keep the order of the dialogue.
And I, I see in the presentation that we have that it says that the city also wants to add banded lighting and security cameras. I don't remember having any discussion about security cameras. Did we?
We've had very preliminary discussions about installation of surveillance cameras at key strategic intersections. Again, when you look at the pole here, the pole provides the potential to do it.
I understand that. Thank you, town manager. I'm finished with my questions.
Thank you. So I'm gonna change topics on my questions, and it has to do with this lease agreement.
Sure.
This is what you're proposing that we act on tonight, as it's written here.
Yes.
So I'm jumping down to page three of fourteen, where it's actually after the lease agreement. And could you explain a little bit of the initial term and rental? I'm trying to get down to the, the financial impacts here. The way I read this, you're looking for a ten-year lease, and you're offering two options, either an upfront lump sum of thirty-five-hundred dollars per pole, and that changes after twenty-three months to a monthly rental fee of one, one hundred and fifty dollars, or an annual fee for each pole of eighteen-hundred dollars.
Yes.
Those are the options. And then, at the end of that item two-point B, this fee shall increase annually measured, and then, sorry, Michael, but there's a lot of legal ease in this lease agreement. This fee shall increase annually measured from the commencement date by three percent, or the percentage changes in the CPI, whichever is greater. Can you just explain what the numbers are?
Essentially, we would be giving three percent increase. And the lease option agreement is pretty customary as far as the lease option that we pass on to the operators. So basically, we're, you know, sharing in that revenue and it's, it's very customary to have a three percent increase.
Okay.
Which we would, which would be added revenue.
And, and the reason for the two options is because we may want to...
You may want to use the thirty-five-hundred towards your Wi-Fi upfront, or you may just want to collect a monthly fee, which, you know, most of the towns and cities are opting for an annual, an annual sum.
So one's getting a little more money upfront and the other one is a little bit more money overall, but it's spread out over the life of the...
Sure, yes.
Okay. And now I'm missing where there was another question I had. There is a, there was a may, like the town may, and I don't know if this is gonna sound familiar to you or not. Shoot, I hope, hopefully I'll be able to find it. It seemed odd that it was a may instead of a shall, in terms of the town benefit.
It's two B. Town may receive an annual fee.
Oh, that, yeah, that is it. The town may receive an annual fee for each pole. Yeah, you're right. Because the two A, we will be paid a sum. Two B says, we might receive an annual fee.
Which we've, we have gone back and forth a couple times with this agreement and we're very open to making certain modifications that would fit for the town. I'm, I'm not our legal counsel, so I do unfamiliar this lease, lease option. But we're, I, I do know, because I've been in between with our, our legal representative and, and with the towns and cities, that we're very open and flexible.
Okay. And maybe I missed it, but I don't see anything about maintenance and who's responsible for maintenance.
We would be maintaining.
So, I'm not sure that I saw that in here. I don't know if...
It is in there.
It is in there, okay. Lost in the legalese for me, I'm sorry.
We took the word maintenance and turned it into about thirty words.
Yeah, that's, it was very effective.
And just to address though quickly the, the may question, I think that's just the continuation of the alternative language. So...
As an option two.
You can choose A, or you may also choose B. It's not intended to make uncertain the fact that if you chose B, you would in fact get paid.
Right. So then, is it, I see that there are termination clauses in here, but if EnerSphere goes away, what happens to the poles and what happens to the, what happens at our end? If you guys are bought, you guys are solvent, whatever it is?
We would, we would go back to the town before negotiating another contract and work together with the town to, to, to basically create a new agreement.
Alternatively, if, I mean, we had the same conversation when we were talking about solar panels.
Sure.
And if the company goes away?
Right.
What happens to the equipment that we now have? You know, what would happen to the poles and what do we do with the agreements?
Well, I guess it depends on, if I may just jump in, it depends on what you mean by go away. by "go away." So, if EnerSphere, for example...
Becomes insolvent, goes bankrupt, disappears.
Then you would have a $40,000 asset.
Yeah.
Then we would then have to manage the, we would assume the contracts of any service providers.
Then you would do whatever you want with it. If we went, if we went away, you would, it would be up to your discretion.
It wouldn't necessarily belong to the town. It could, though. And that would be a conversation we'd want to have carefully, I think, before we took possession of an item that might itself bring with it some baggage.
Yeah, we may not want to do that.
We may not want it, but it, by function of the lease, we would not automatically own it. If EnerSphere, for any reason, wants to remove the pole, or we need it to be removed, and they're still solvent, then we can require them to do that under the lease. If they are absorbed by a larger company, they have the ability to transfer or assign the lease with our approval. And so, there are other mechanisms if it isn't quite as drastic as EnerSphere completely dissolves overnight. But even if that happened, I think then we would just have to figure out what to do with the pole. It sounds as though it would be fairly easy to dismantle if we had to. But the property is still the town's property.
But we would be at some exposure potentially with any contracts, or would we not?
No.
If service providers that are using that pole, we don't assume anything.
Their agreement is not with us.
No.
We lease essentially the two-by-two square plus easements to get to it, to EnerSphere. They put the pole on it, and what they do with the pole is their business, but we don't necessarily have any connection with, with their agreements with providers.
Okay. Yeah, Vice Mayor?
So, I didn't, I thought, I thought I missed it in here. There's not a revenue share component associated with this? Because typically, in a cell tower lease, there's not just a lease fee that's paid, but then in addition to that, because they're the recipient of the primary benefit from the payer, namely the provider, there's typically a revenue sharing agreement that's included.
That's one way of doing it. This lease, as proposed by EnerSphere, is pretty much a straight rental. So, those are two options that you identified before. Those are the two revenue streams coming from the pole. But if you're looking for a percentage of their subleases, that's not in the lease that they're proposing.
Right.
Is that something that you just don't find of interest to the company? Is that why you're not proposing that as an option?
We have actually worked out with other town, with other cities to, instead of making it a set amount, to change it to a percentage. And there's a range.
Sure. Okay.
So, we, I think we would be open to changing it to a percentage, whichever is greater, you know, either the set amount or percentage. But again, the legal, the legal decisions are not made by me, so we would have to go back to our legal counsel.
Okay. I just had one last question about these poles, and now it's, oh, the, the ability for these to adapt to the ever-changing technology industry. How versatile? There's not really any infrastructure in these poles that can't just be changed out by the service provider.
No. The antennas, we buy our antennas actually from Germany, from a country, a company called Catrine, and there's another company, Galvatronics, and these are all approved, these, the both antennas, and the reason that we utilize these antennas is they are all approved by all of the operators here in the U.S. And we work closely with the manufacturers of the antennas as far as upgrading and evolving with the technology. And so, it's easy for us to, to change out the antennas if needed.
Okay.
And on the technology end, you know, as I mentioned, one of the great opportunities with this infrastructure is to also integrate sensors and other, other technologies that could be utilized by the town. So, that's something, when we're talking about multipurpose, we're basically giving you an infrastructure that can be utilized in many different ways with multiple technologies.
Okay. Those are my questions at this point. Any other questions of, okay, thank you very much. I invite members of the public. I saw a hand come up earlier. Yes, the hand is still coming up. Carla?
My name's Carla Rief, R-E-Y-F-F, two Fs is in two Franks at 11 Forrester Lane. I just have a couple of comments. The first is that I guess I'm a Luddite, and Marietta Doranberger shamed me last summer into going down to Apple to get a iPad. So, I went to get the iPad, had it in my hands, picked it out, went across the street to get everything signed up, and I was told my house could get no Wi-Fi. Does this mean I can get Wi-Fi if this happens?
We'll answer that, and any other questions you have, we'll line them up and then we'll answer.
And incidentally, the house next door to me has Wi-Fi, one across the street from me has Wi-Fi, the other house across the street from me can't get Wi-Fi either. So, I don't know how that works. The other is just a comment that 20 years ago in San Francisco, when I was working and doing neighborhood work, they were really working at getting any kind of thing that looked like a utility pole underground. And this just doesn't seem to be moving in that direction, and that might be something to consider. That's it.
Thank you. So, the questions that are being asked, you can go ahead and sit down. I'm just asking staff to answer, what does it mean in terms of getting Wi-Fi coverage? And also, is this going the, you know, opposite direction of us trying to eliminate utility above ground? Or is it, I mean, I know you can't have the, this service underground, it has to be up in the air.
The short answer is, since this is not a Wi-Fi proposal, and we have not done all of the engineering studies, I don't want to say yes or no that it could potentially support a specific location. That would be something that with, if your interest, you know, we anticipate having that as a discussion at a future council retreat, is that an area? I'm going to suggest that we have a, a challenge because cellular service, which we all depend on, doesn't work from antennas buried in the ground. So, we're going to have to come up with a acceptable compromise within our communities of how to do that. So, what I would say in this particular case, that while this is not burying underground, which includes the wires, the option here that's presented is to try to design something that incorporates something that is typically already in a community, such as a streetlight. So, in other words, the primary purpose of this device isn't one of those classic antennas. You know, most communities, we have parking lots with streetlights, we have streetlights on the street. So, they've chose a strategy to try to use it to look like something like that so that it looks more normal in the deployment. And there may be other companies that have a different model. Some of you have seen the very fake trees that aren't so, I mean, they stand out. There are some cell towers that are, you see some of those 100-foot-tall flagpoles. So, there's some different approaches, but I think what you will see, and we're having more conversations, is the industry is moving from these large towers and various things because the, the signal needs to be in greater proximity to where we are. This is the research that I've been reading as we move forward. So, it's about putting a smaller-scale antenna in proximity to our businesses and the homes and where we're actually using the devices. So, from that standpoint.
I think maybe the answer is explaining, if you can, in, you know, 100 words or less, Wi-Fi and people that have home Wi-Fi have their own individual connections that get that service as opposed to, I mean, the reason you might see it when you walk across the street is you're tapping into somebody else's service, and you see that they have a security password that you may or may not have been given by your neighbors to use.
And there are alternative providers.
This would replace the individual homeowner having its own connection to that.
I don't want to go there yet. I do not want people...
No, I'm saying that that's what, if we, in Washington Park, there's a spot on here that there would be a tower potentially proposed in, in Washington Park. I would wager that you would get your home Wi-Fi if there's a tower a block from your home.
If you're...
If we have Wi-Fi.
AT&amp;T, Verizon, whoever the provider is.
Right. And if there's a, if there's a Wi-Fi component to that pole. But if you have Verizon, as you were just saying, if you have Verizon for your phone and AT&amp;T is the service provider on that pole, that may not improve your situation specifically.
We would have, I think, you know, this certainly presents the opportunity. We would need to have a few resources to help us do some technical engineering deployment to look at what potentially a system would look like. And again, if that's something that comes out of this conversation, that's something I'll be able to start working on, because I do think we have some alternatives to do some things unique because of the size and the footprint and scale. So, I think there's some opportunities that staff certainly needs to learn more about to present in a more intelligent way to you.
Yeah. I want to see Billy. I think, do you have a question or comment?
Excuse me. My phone went to sleep, not because the subject is boring. Thank you. Billy Hewitt again, Nine Landy Way. The town's plan, ultimate goal, is to have all utilities underground. And, you know, I know there are certain portions of town that are proposed. Next year, they'll have their utilities buried. Where I live, I already have all utilities buried. I get phone service, I get television service, I get Wi-Fi service at my house. I don't have a pole. I think, I think as a group, we need to really consider imposing other poles. If it takes the place of a light pole, let's call it that, I mean, I think it's broader than just installing a sphere or a, what'd you, I'm sorry, I can't remember what it's called, but I just think we need to think about it longer and harder, and to check on the emissions. Last month, in your PG&E bill, you know, came the emission, what do I want, the radio frequency waves that you get from various poles and microwaves and telephones and computers, and that there are studies being done about the health effects. So, I just, so I'm concerned about introducing that into the town. But I think as a town, we need to really consider everything underground. And Steve said it can't be done, but they probably said that about the telephone a few years ago, that it can't be done.
It doesn't, unless you're able to change science, you're not going to be able to do it. It's a totally different situation.
I know.
And I think that's, I'll invite you, if that was all you had to say. There was mention that the primary focus is the Washington Street Business Corridor as a primary area for, to Councilmember Durham's point, trying to get Wi-Fi capability especially in the community center, in the community park, in Veterans Memorial Park. Not necessarily going into the neighborhoods and adding poles for residential. Maybe that's something that we want to look at, but principally, I think the effort was in response to needing, a lot of folks would like to have the ability to be on a cellphone or get free Wi-Fi on their tablet while they're sitting in the park or sitting in the plaza of the community center, things like that. So, I think that's fair to say that that's one of the things that certainly I've heard is a desire. Anyone else from the public? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Pam Reeves. I live at 6887 Jefferson Street, and yes, I am here because of that left-hand picture. And the idea of putting all of these poles along Washington Street, I have a question about whether, is it for residents or is it for visitors? I think that's something that needs to be discussed. Yes, we are all subject to our provider's ability to get the service to us, and I also have a question about if you can only pick one or two providers to lease to, then what do the other providers do? We have an ordinance now that puts some restrictions, but still would allow other providers to put up poles. Then would we have these e-poles, which seem to be a nicer example of a pole, but we would still have to entertain more requests for poles that didn't match that unless we require everyone to use those poles? I think if you were looking for uniformity in the town, you want to make sure that you get that. So, you have to identify enough places, and I agree with Councilmember Doran Becker that in-town parks is not a place to put a facility like this. Especially that location is just horrifying, but also, I would not like it to interfere with any future plans of undergrounding those poles that are along that western edge of the park. If you want to put a pole near the park, in the cemetery, I wouldn't have as much of a problem with that. Those people don't care about RFs, and it would not interfere with the look of that park. Also, in the south end, if you put it where that improved quote-unquote gravel parking lot is at the southern part of town, as a light pole there, that would be acceptable, or any other parking lot perhaps, but not in a park setting or that influences the vista of a park. It's just not really aesthetically pleasing. And also, the, the other thing that stood out in the report as I was reading it was to provide surveillance abilities, and I absolutely do not agree with that. That's a false sense of security, that we're all watched at all moments of our lives because we're afraid of, I don't know what. I don't think that Yountville has hit the threshold of being a horrible place to live that needs so much surveillance, and I hope we never do, but I don't think cameras will add to our safety. I would not like to see a lot of mismatched poles, so if we do decide to go in this direction with this one certain pole, we should make sure that there's coverage for all service providers. Otherwise, what's the point of having a few nice ones and a few ugly ones or attachments to other ugly ones? And if we underground, then they have to install a pole, and it could be quite ugly. So, and would the town then, if they provided this Wi-Fi townwide, would that be free access? Do we all get a visitor's code or something? So, there's just a lot of questions, and I would, would hope that you would make sure that we have an ability to have more conversations about this, because I think there's a lot of issues that it brings up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just along for the ride? Okay. Seeing no more public comment, additional discussion by the council. Who would like to start? We'll start on this end. Councilmember Durham?
I'll start. I agree with everyone who has spoken this evening in terms of locations, consistency, as well as surveillance and all those other issues that come with it. I think that a town-wide Wi-Fi would be great. I, I would hope that in 2015, given the size of our community, that that's something that could be considered from the community, from the business side of it all the way to the residential side of it. I agree with Councilmember Mueller that we need to look to it further to see what our, what our options are and how we do moving forward. Also, if, if the presenter is correct in that they want to use us as an example for the rest of the valley, I'm all for more opportunities for this town of Yountville as well for this project moving forward. If they, if they want to use this as an example, if we work out, if this is good for us, I think it's an opportunity for us to, to utilize that and to move forward with it. So, but I do want to come back to the fact that I think it's a good opportunity for the Wi-Fi, for the increased, and with all respects to Councilmember Mueller, I got rid of my landline two years ago. So, I do...
But during an earthquake, I could make a difference.
Very good. So, so the Wi-Fi and the cellular is very important to me, and it's 2015, given the amount of people may, using... Given the amount of people using selfie sticks on Washington, I'd like to make sure that they can all continue to do that and hashtag Yountville. So I think it's very good. Those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I think I listed most of mine before. I kind of think our next step is some type of a workshop. And I think that staff has probably heard a lot of different things that could be discussed there. And let's get some more involvement in this conversation. So I'm not sure how everyone else is going to weigh in, but I'm ready to continue talking. I'm really, you know, not completely ready to say, here's my want list and my don't-want list yet, but I'm willing to move forward. I don't ... I think it might be a little early to sign a resolution to enter into a lease agreement. So I would hope that our provider here be willing to continue talking. I think the good part is, you live in Yountville, so, you know ...
San Lina.
Oh, San Lina. Okay, well.
I'm on the street.
Anyway, so that's where I'd like to see this go.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
I'm not opposed to considering this, but I agree with my colleagues that we need to have a further discussion. I'm not prepared to enter into a lease at this time. But I'm definitely interested in continuing the discussion. And the Wi-Fi would be free to everyone. I just want to make sure that when we do end up doing it. But I would also like to see the technical information and the contrast between what other poles emit, because I think that that's an important thing. Billy and I serve on the Climate Action Plan Committee, and that's something that we're very interested in. So I have, I agree with my colleagues. I would like more time. I'm not ready to sign this yet, but I am interested in entertaining it when I feel like I have more information. But I don't want any of them in the parks. Sorry, Joe.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. It's, I mean, obviously, it's garnered a lot of attention from the group here. There's a lot of engaged people from the community. I agree. I think that, you know, this is maybe a good opportunity for us to start the dialogue and get a workshop organized, or at least bring the community together to have further discussion around it. I love to see agreements, because there's always opportunities to improve them. And so I would recommend that we, should we decide to move forward with EnerSphere or whatever organization, that we review the agreement. And this seems maybe a little premature to put together and put an approval forward on an agreement as a community at this juncture. I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions. But these are things we've been bringing up. And so I applaud the town manager and the staff for bringing this to us. I'd like to just say, though, that, you know, public Wi-Fi or having a hotspot for that, it may ultimately serve or cater to some extent to the guests who visit our community. But the reality is, and I've been to Bodega Bay and not have my mobile phone work, and I don't have a five-week-old anymore, but if you're there as an individual and your car breaks down and you can't call anyone, unless you want to put your thumb out and let the next person drive by and pick you up, and this is not that remote. But we are in a community where we want to have access. We want to be in touch. I guess in Yountville, you could walk from the park down to the Redwood or something. But that said, I mean, it is a safety issue to some extent and having connectivity, and I'm all for that. I'm not exactly sure where these things go. You could look on Mulberry Street, as long as there's a strong signal. But that being the case, there's certainly some value and merit to pursuing or at least continuing to move down the path. Seems consistent with the ordinance we all just approved tonight from a stealth standpoint. I mean, I think we should continue the dialogue, engage the community, and see what would work best.
Thank you. I have absolutely no problem. I actually encourage us to have this capability in our two large parks. I don't understand the concern about that at all, to be honest. I think this is a bad representation, to be perfectly honest. It's what we all fear, is the urbanization of our streets. And I think that's where you're hearing some of the feedback. At a different agency, we just went through a rebranding process, and we made the mistake of putting a picture up on a PowerPoint that wasn't what we intended it to be, but it was a color that people freaked out about.
I was afraid of that.
And so we're all very sensitive to that. There's a tar-covered, dark wooden pole right where that one is now that's unsightly, that I'd love to see go away. And if that example had been black or brown, we might have a different conversation right now. But that also is a very high-profile particular intersection. So as is the other picture to the right, which is right along the streetscape of the French Laundry, as I'm sure you're aware, that is one of our most picturesque stretches of Washington Street. So while it may be the most effective for the service providers, we're going to really need to reevaluate, if we're going forward, the locations and how they fit into the streetscape. I absolutely think that this is the right thing to do, moving forward, getting service for the community. This, I live here. I would love to have the ability to sit with my tablet in one of our parks and be able to do my work outside, rather than be anchored to the community center plaza or my home, where I can get coverage or pay huge prices for using your data instead of having Wi-Fi. This is absolutely the direction the world is going. It's how we get there that is still part of the debate. And just because this may benefit people that are coming to visit, doesn't mean it's not a huge benefit to those of us that live here. My wife put on a, helped put on a fundraising charity run, and they had 12 tablets they needed to get access, and they couldn't get them connected to use them to register people for the run. So that's really challenging. That's something that we are benefiting from by having this kind of service. So I fully support having them in public places. I would be more hesitant to put them in the neighborhoods for the same reasons I described about the impacts on the streetscape. I am one of those people that is not as concerned about emissions. I have my mobile device next to my heart right now. I know it's unproven, what it means, but that isn't a high priority for me. Being in open spaces like this, that's not a concern. I'm more concerned about the aesthetic. You may think it's a small box. It looks like a big box to me at the base. I would absolutely say we need to screen that with landscaping, which might be sufficient. But I do think this type of town-wide service is in our future, and it's just about how we get there. I agree that it feels a little premature. I still have questions about the agreement as it's written. I would like our staff to vet it a little bit more thoroughly. I don't know which is the better financial option to consider, for example. I'd like to hear staff drill down a little bit more on that. So I would like to get us, you know, moving forward on this topic, but I don't think we're there tonight.
And I can also say, as we respond to things, it's also important that we understand. I heard you'd like more questions. So in order for us to bring back a public workshop, I need a little more specifics on what it is you're looking for.
So I'm going to try to summarize that, then. I think there needs to be an understanding, and frankly, the public needs to educate themselves on what we're talking about as well. We'll try to provide as much information as possible. What does Wi-Fi mean? And how can you do it? What does cellular service mean and why you can't put it underground? These are very practical and in some ways, basic, but they're not completely understood. How many service providers would we need in order to have the broadest coverage? If there are four main providers out there, do most of us have one or two of them? And is that who we would want you to be going out and trying to sign up agreements on?
I also want to, these are helpful, and if you've got some other ... Because the concern that I have is we're linking, as was tried to explain, this is not a proposal to provide Wi-Fi. It's a pole that allows for us to have the capacity.
I think the council understands that.
My concern, though, is if you're expecting at a public workshop to talk about what it would take from a Wi-Fi standpoint, I'm going to need to get some technical consultant help to answer that question, because we don't have that in-house.
And I think that is what we're asking, because it depends on if, as Councilmember Durham said earlier, one of the concerns is town-wide free Wi-Fi. What does that mean?
That's what I'm just saying.
Does that mean two poles at each end of town? Does it mean seven poles?
Okay.
And then, we're not talking about who are we signing up for service provider, but if cell service is not a big issue, because most of us get service in town, that's not as high a priority. I would definitely encourage you to talk to the county and Silverado Trail. They could use a few of these towers along Silverado Trail, as we all know.
I've done my own propaganda.
Yeah, I bet. I bet.
Regarding service, I have one question. Do we get an input? Or is that totally controlled by ...
In terms of the service providers?
Right.
What is leasing the pole?
Right. That's what my question is.
It depends.
We need to have you up here at the microphone for you to answer. Sorry. We have people at home watching, believe it or not.
It depends on the desirable need to be in the location on behalf of the operator. So we have allocated a few that have interest in working with us and leasing the antenna from the pole. So it really depends on the operator.
And so I guess that's really more, I mean, these might be multiple workshops even, because that's a pretty detailed question. I mean, should we have an input? I think we should have an input, because if, you can make a lot of money, for example, no offense, Steve, selling everything to Sprint, and Steve's the only guy in town who has Sprint, you know, it's not going to really benefit our community. So there's a lot of layers just to that part of the discussion.
Well, Sprint wouldn't want a tower if they didn't have any customers.
So can I just show, this is a pilot project. And we're wanting to establish an example and basically create a standard. And from that, we can use that pilot to present to other multiple operators. It's really going to depend on who's wanting to participate and be involved in this pilot and who's wanting to actually be here in Yountville and is looking to increase their coverage. I will say that, based on my own evaluation of the area, this entire valley has been completely overlooked. And over in the business of going out and pleading with the operators to come to Yountville, we are going to look for the operator that wants to participate and be involved and lease the antenna. So it, and I understand your concern and your question. I believe that there's a starting point. And what we've proposed is, you know, we pilot this project. Obviously, if it is not effective, not working, you know, we're not opposed to taking down the pole and, you know, and moving on. We do, I will share with you, we have allocated a specific amount of poles to be utilized for this project here in Yountville. The timeframe is important. So I would like to organize, if we were to do a session and, you know, dive into more technical questions and answer all of your questions that you have, I would like to, if possible, organize that fairly soon and make sure that I have the support from our team and have all of your legal and technical questions answered and come up with a direction for this. But I do know, as a company, we would like to work with the town of Yountville. I'm selfishly interested, because I do know that there's the need for coverage and capacity here, and I would like to see that happen, not only in Yountville, but all throughout the entire Napa area. And I would like to see that the towns and cities are able to be proactive and move forward with these innovative technologies and create it. Because I do think it's important. It's important not only for the tourism here, but for the residents. I struggle. I live in St. Helena. I would love to put a pole in my backyard, if I could. And I think that it's a concern. It's a safety concern. And, you know, it's a concern from the business perspective as well, and residents and tourists. So, sorry.
No, you may find out that the, to Councilmember Mueller's point, I think, a little bit, the service providers, based on population, it sometimes takes a little convincing to come and provide service. It took a long time for Comcast to come up valley from the city of Napa. Because of the infrastructure, they needed to ...
What I'm sharing is that we do have operators, that we have already presented the opportunity. Hypothetically, if we're moving forward with a lease option agreement, would you be interested? And, you know, is this top on their list? Probably not. But obviously, the, you know, they would be looking at the high-traffic areas of San Francisco and, you know, high-volume areas. But we've brought this to them. There is interest. The interest is probably time-sensitive at this point right now. So I'm just proposing, if we could sit down and have this discussion sooner than later, I think it would be beneficial on both ends.
And I was just, sorry, I was just reading down here about termination. You mentioned, you know, if this doesn't work out, you can take the poles and move on. I was just reviewing the termination clauses, because if we're signing a 10-year lease agreement with you, we want to make sure that both sides were protected that way. But I would also encourage, to the town manager's point, that you provide some technical assistance to add some clarity to exactly the kind of service we can get out of your poles.
Absolutely.
And what it means to the service delivery for our residents and the overall community. I think that would help with some clarification of, how many do we need? Where do they need to be to give us what we are looking for?
Absolutely. And what I'm proposing is to basically work between the town, our company EnerSphere, and with the operator, to basically come up with a solution that works for everyone that is also in the best interest of the town of Yountville. And again, you know, we have modified our lease option agreement to essentially bring it back to the town as far as the decision of the locations and to work together. That's the cities and the towns that we're working with, that we've been successful with in the past, we have that type of relationship. And it's a collaborative relationship. We, again, coming back to, you know, the ordinance, we're working with various cities and towns to help assist with, you know, there are a lot of towns and cities that have a lot of holes and that don't have these ordinances in places, in place. And you're seeing the really ugly infrastructure, and it's going to become even worse. I know, coming from Atlanta and from Georgia and in the south, there's a lot of really awful foreign attachments and congested poles and outside of the entrance to country clubs and to, you know, so aesthetically, it's important. And, you know, we offer a solution that is unified and consistent. And so we, I apologize, I'm not an expert with Photoshop.
No, that's all right.
And this was, you know, our head of marketing did this Photoshop image, and, you know, I even mentioned to Steve, I said, you know, and it's not black. And I don't know, I don't know if I could do better, if, you know, if we had a professional company that did the illustration, it might be a little bit more of a different impact.
I think that's probably true. I'm going to not try to propose a date certain on continuing this item. I think we need to leave it up to staff and to you about how you can move forward. Do you have enough direction?
I'm still, what I, I see interest, and I see people searching for stuff, and I'm trying to make sure that the information that we're going to get is searching. So we're going to work on a broader overview. We'll fine-tune some of the potential locations. I'm hearing mixed messages on parks, because in some cases, I'm hearing people say, no parks. But if you also want service in a park, it may be that we need to talk about appropriate locations, meaning that there are some that are not. And I'm hearing from you that perhaps the entry point at Yountville Community Park is not. So I've got some idea I want to work off of. I think I can, we have had some very preliminary discussions on a Wi-Fi concept, so I'll see if we can expand that a little bit. But I don't know what your time horizon, are you willing to have a workshop in December, since we only have one council meeting?
Councilmember Durham?
Can I ask you a question? Do we need a workshop? Can we not get these questions from the provider? Can we not get these questions from the provider, from the town, to present us at the next council meeting and make that, and make that very clear to the community who's concerned about this? Because I agree, I, you know, it's unfortunate, we knew that was going to happen with that picture, but we all realize that. I agree with you. I want townwide, so what's it going to take? How many poles is it going to take? And let's just be very clear with the next presentation with that. Do we need to, my question is, do we need a workshop for that?
I personally don't think that we need a workshop.
Okay.
But I do think that we need to be, have a more robust information available to us to evaluate.
And I do want to share, I know you didn't have a chance to read through the lease option agreement, but it is within the agreement that based on any location that is going to be selected would have to be approved, we would have to go through that process with the town. So, this just, you know, the lease option agreement allows us to move forward in furthering the discussion with the operators, bringing the opportunity to the town, having that discussion, looking at the locations based on their RF propagation and where they're specifically looking to be located. We're going through this in South Carolina, basically, you know, having to go back and negotiate locations. And, you know, we did bring a specific footprint, but essentially, they wanted something outside of the footprint. So, you know, it is, the lease option is, it allows us to move forward, and there are a lot of decisions that have to be made beyond that, and we're taking an approach as becoming a partner with the town, not just a, you know, a...
The way I read the council, though, you're not going to get approval on a lease option tonight.
Exactly, sure.
I think if the council is, you know, feels the need for a separate meeting as, you know, identifying it as a workshop, then we need to make that decision. If we don't, I agree with Councilmember Durham that the same result can be achieved by allowing you to bring, you've heard the information from the members of the public and from us, bringing resources to that discussion. Whatever the staff still needs clarified, we can have this conversation continue on the first of December. It's not that far in the future, and we can decide if it's the right thing for us or not. So, I would ask the council if the December 1 meeting is sufficient to continue this item, or if a separate meeting is your choice.
Could you email us the technical information?
Absolutely, yeah. Yes.
Could you please email me?
Why not? Let's continue the dialogue and...
I would want all your communication to go through, Steve.
Absolutely, yes.
And that way, I can make sure that it's also shared in a public portal on our website.
Right, right. So, yeah, Councilmember Mueller?
Well, here's what my difficulty is. We're basically being asked to sign a lease agreement, and then we're going to work on the proposal. We're used to kind of working the opposite way, which is, here is a proposal, or three or four proposals, is this something you like, and maybe we refine one of those, and then, then based on that, then you can put together, you know, the lease option agreement. So, that's where I'm a little backwards with how...
Are you referencing cell towers or communication and infrastructure?
Well, is there two? Is there seven?
Right.
Are they going to be along Washington? Are they going to not be in a park? Are they, are we going to have town Wi-Fi that may dictate whether you need two or four or seven? So, it seems like there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle that if you can somehow bring all that back, but I don't really see how you can.
I can't, and I'll tell you, it's...
Well, I'm struggling.
It basically will come down to, we have a lease option agreement signed with the town, we then go back, present it to the operators. There is a lot of technical engineering that has to take place to decide exactly the locations. Obviously, we're not talking about a very large footprint, and as I mentioned earlier, the specific areas that are going to be in high-traffic, high-demand areas are, from what I'm hearing, where you would like to have the Wi-Fi and, you know, public Wi-Fi spaces. So, it, the lease option would have to be executed in order for us to go back to the operators and bring the operators to, because each individual operator, the scenario is going to be a little bit different.
But I would venture to guess that through your experience with your company, you can give us a general, basic sense of, you've already done it to a degree here, about how much do we need for coverage for Wi-Fi?
Yes.
In our public spaces or throughout the entire town?
Yes.
We're barely, you know, over one square mile, so you must have data that's available on average, and we're not going to hold you to the individual household or the exact square footage of coverage. But that helps us understand how many streets and intersections and neighborhoods would be involved and impacted.
Right.
And I think that, you've heard what we're resisting. We're resisting the urbanization of our streets. We're concerned about how this benefits the town. We're also, I think, concerned about what kind of revenue generation there is to make it worth our while to do this.
So, you know, back to the Wi-Fi and the use of the infrastructure, you know, the cost, just to add the infrastructure, if you were just to decide to put your own infrastructure up, we're talking about thousands of dollars that would need to be invested. So, you know, here's a multipurpose pole, we would be willing, as a partner of the town, to then go back to the operators and suggest locations that we know are going to fit both for the town and work for the operators. So, there are a lot of moving parts. We are very open to making this a win-win on both ends and also for the operator. But coming back to the full presentation, the full picture, that's something, once we have this lease option executed, then we will bring you individual proposals and opportunity depending on the operator that we're working with. But as far as the Wi-Fi, we have selected two specific locations. We've determined, in order to have the public Wi-Fi that you're seeking, essentially utilizing two of our e-poles would be sufficient, and so...
And that's a very good step to providing the information, I think you're hearing, that we would like to have.
Yes.
So, I think we've covered it for now.
Yes, but I'm also going to say, we're not going to meet it on the December 1 council meeting.
Why not?
Councilmember Durham?
If I might, I'm sorry, so that we drag it out even, don't drag it out anymore. I mean, I like the, I like, as a person who only has a cellphone, I like the idea of townwide Wi-Fi. I think, when I read this, when I went over it, that was my perspective moving in. It was not, how is my cellular phone going to work better at my home? Is it possible that that's the way that we can move forward, or am I being too short-sighted and seeing that?
No, I think it is, because what I'm reading is, your offer is two poles to be installed at no cost to us, at a value of $40,000, that could potentially provide Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi throughout the town. And that could potentially be the extent of this beta test.
No.
Let me, no, let me, let me help clarify a few things. This is not a proposal for a free...
I understand that, no.
No, please, please. What I'm trying to say, we can get you the information on what it would look like, because, for example, we could, you could say, Steve, we're interested in a free Wi-Fi, go out, solicit, request for proposals, they could look very different. So, I just want to say, I think I understand what you're looking for, we will try to refine it. The caution that I put out is, with the Thanksgiving holiday schedule, the short turnaround, and a couple other pressing issues that you have that I'm working on, I don't have the time to finalize all the questions that you've asked us to get and have those completed by November 20.
Well, that's why I was leaving it up to you to determine when this could come back. If it can't be December 1, that's the way it goes.
It's just, I mean...
Okay, that's fine. We don't have to argue that.
In order for us to do the job that you expect us...
The point I was making, Steve, is if there's not the interest of the council to go to this full beta of service providers throughout town, we could have started with step one, which is what we were talking about, which is two poles. We don't get into the full cellular data service provider component yet. We may see how that goes. Does that satisfy what we want to do for Yountville?
It does, but what I will say, the proposal from EnerSphere needs the cell service component, or they're not going to be interested in providing us the poles, because that's where their revenue stream and their model is. That's all I'm trying to clarify.
She's got to get paid.
But the, but my hotspot is Verizon, which is being paid on my data plan, so Verizon is making money through my Wi-Fi, correct? Through my hotspot, correct?
Through your hotspot, yes.
Yeah, so by offering Wi-Fi throughout the community, is Verizon not making money from Yountville?
Verizon...
Correct, sorry, whatever service it was.
Well, but, so my understanding is that the Wi-Fi is 100% separate from the cell service providers.
Okay.
Nothing to do with it.
All right, very good, very good.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Sorry, all right.
Imagine this, so in your home, your internet, right, comes through your cable, and then you hook that up to a wireless router, town would be doing exactly the same thing.
Okay.
But the town's footing the bill.
Would be footing the bill, but that's the most simplistic summary...
For the entire community.
We don't know what that is.
Precisely.
But yeah, but that, again, as Steve has mentioned, is not on the table.
Separate conversation.
We haven't even looked into it. But that's what that would look like.
While we're all giving feedback, may I?
Councilmember Dornbecker, I would like a little bit more order to the conversation.
Sorry, I asked.
Go ahead, I know, and you have the floor.
I would ask that in your putting, refining this plan, you look at, because I really like the idea from one of our townspeople, that we look at the parking lots next to parks might work. Parking lots, you know, also, there are parking lots all over the commercial area that might work. So, please, you know, look beyond the entrance to parks and things, look at the parking lots, we'll look at where other utilitarian things are. Thank you.
And I think that's a good clarification that I appreciate, Councilmember Dornbecker, because when we say no parks versus the right location or more appropriate locations and parks, that gives us some ideas where I think we can look at. And again, I want to stress that the focus we'd be looking at is using this where it also doubles as a streetlight, so that it has the value and its primary purpose in addition to being, so it's not just a tower plopped up. So, that gives us some opportunity to refine some of those areas, especially when we do have some opportunity.
Parking lots, that's the...
So, that's very helpful.
Okay. I think we're not going to resolve it tonight.
Obviously.
I realize that you have a timeline that's not going to match our timeline, basically, you'd like it to happen yesterday, and we're not prepared to move that quickly. However long it's going to take to get a little bit more clarity and more information, and how we can then bring it up to another council meeting, the timing is difficult for you because we have one meeting in December, and it's the first, and if that's not time enough for all this to happen, then it won't be until the beginning of January. But we can't rush into this without understanding what we're getting ourselves into. So, if we miss this opportunity, you're presenting to us, and we're sorry after we lose the opportunity, that's on us. But we need to be comfortable that we're making the right decisions, so.
Okay, and we're willing to do our part to make sure your questions are answered.
Thank you.
Absolutely, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will share that, I think, one thing I will say, we've worked for, with Kimberly and her team for a bit, I do think we can present a thoughtful, try to address what a deployment could look like, some different locations, get the mock-ups all in black, identify a few things, and then have a better understanding. We had a very preliminary Wi-Fi, and like I say, this is something that I need more technical support on. I do think we can be ready to have something that addresses all of those. I'm fairly confident by the January 5, assuming that Kimberly and I are going no place for the holidays, and we'll be spending all the time she's not spending with her newborn while we try to resolve all those things and bring them back.
I'm good with that.
Okay, I think we...
I'm fine with that.
I think we've had is...
I think we've got some good input, and this is what we need to do.
Involve the discussion on this item as we could.
We heard your interest...
So, I think we're going to just continue this item with no action taken by the council.
It was presented as feedback and/or action depending on the direction, so you provided feedback.
You got plenty of feedback.
Plenty. Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item 9B. This should be very brief, I'm quite certain, I hope.
Okay. The goal is 30 seconds, you can time me. All right, maybe not 30 seconds, that's going to be up to you.
And I brought this one, I brought this item forward, so I hope it is brief.
All right. Good evening, night, late night. The, before you tonight is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of intent to have the town of Yountville join the Compact of Mayors. As many of you know, the Compact of Mayors is a global coalition of mayors and municipal officers dedicated to reduce local greenhouse gas emissions. It was an initiative that was originally launched in 2014 as part of the United Nations Climate Summit. The town was contacted on October 6 of this year about submitting a letter of commitment and joining this compact. The invitation included a goal to have as many communities as possible commit by December 4, at which time a climate summit for local leaders would be held. Presently, there are 66 U.S. communities involved, and 16 of which are from California. That number may have changed in the last two hours, as there have been a lot of communities that were waiting until this very instant to also commit. Committing to the compact ultimately would require the town of Yountville to take specific action. We would be committing to do the following four things. First, registering, in the first year, we'd need to register a commitment by filing a letter. That's difficult, it would be signing a letter that is written and is before you today. And the second thing we'd need to do is take an inventory of all the greenhouse gas emissions, which we have also already done. Thirdly, we'd need to create reduction targets and establish a system of measurement, which the town has also already done and is continuing to do so as part of its ongoing climate action plan efforts, along with the efforts being done by the Go Green team. And lastly, the town will be required to establish an action plan, a climate action plan, if you will, which the town is also currently doing. During its October 27 meeting, the town's Go Green team made the recommendation that town council approve the town joining the compact on the condition that it does not require a substantial increase of time and resources. Staff, we've reached out to different representatives of this Compact of Mayors, and we've, it's of staff's opinion that it would not require additional substantial amount of work. The transit, the majority of the work would be just translating our existing greenhouse gas emission index into a format that the Compact of Mayors respects, well, not respects, but uses. You put it in the same language that they've been doing all their others. Other communities would be going through the same thing as Yountville, and so we would have a good support team of everyone working together in order to put this in a format that is understandable for the whole world to understand ultimately. That is the goal of this Compact of Mayors. Initially, it may take some time, but down the road, it would not be an overall significant amount of additional resources. It's staff's recommendation that the town council authorize the town of Yountville to join this Compact of Mayors, and for the mayor to submit a letter of commitment to join the compact. I'm also here to answer any questions, if you have any.
I'll ask a very quick first one before I ask the rest of the council. It says, yes, there is a fiscal impact. Is that referencing just the staff time?
Correct.
To gather everything?
Depending on if we might need to add amendment to a consultant's, maybe Ms. O'Rourke, who has already been working with us, that might require an amendment to her agreement to change our greenhouse gas emissions into a form, our report into a form that is...
But it's just, it's staff time we're talking about. There isn't actual money that's being committed to anything here.
No, 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 we're not. As far as we haven't understood now, we're not cutting any additional check.
Okay, questions? Councilmember Mueller?
Okay, I was very involved on the first step, which was putting together the inventory. And all my questions are really going to be about time, because, and, you know, do we really know how much time it's going to take? Because personally, I just don't see this really adds anything. I don't want to take any time away from what we're committed to do for state mandates or state goals or any of our other action plans. I mean, even if it requires, you know, the staff missing out on taking our Go Green team out on a couple more site visits so they can get more educated or any of that stuff, so, because I just don't see what it really adds. So, that's really where I need some more information, because when we put together the inventory for greenhouse gases, there was a lot of stuff that kind of came up that we had to wrestle with, and, you know, we had to go back to ICLI... with, and, you know, we had to go back to ICLI, and they had their model, and then they were changing their model, and there were procedures for entering the data. It was not simple. It took us, um, well, Councilmember Dornbecker was on there too. We probably worked on it for a year and a half or so, and we had to use these very specific models that ICLI had, because we were going to standardize it across all the different California communities. And then that was changing, and then we had to get different consultants, and it took them quite a bit of time, you know, because you have to go out and solicit all this information from PG&E, and put them in different units, and put them in different columns, and so that's really, can we just use the ICLI data in the ICLI format that we already have? Are, or do we even know enough that we're going to have to change it to a totally different format? What do we know about that, that, so we really can judge whether it's going to be substantial or not substantial increase in staff time to do it?
A lot of it, we don't know, because they're still kind of figuring it out themselves.
So, ICLI right in the beginning, hence my point.
It's very similar.
Yes.
The town of Yountville right now, I will say, is ahead of the game. It's ahead of what most of the other communities are doing. Notice, this compact was originally set up in 2014. We were already starting to be on the ball with this stuff prior to 2014. And right now, joining this compact would not take away nor add anything from our current efforts. It would not affect our future missions with our climate action plan in any way, shape, or form. What this would be doing would be adding an extra recognition of being part of this.
No, I, and I totally understand that. I'm just really trying to assess the time, and Sandra was very involved with that. It was very time consuming getting all the background data in the form that we needed for Phase 1 of ICLI, and then there was Phase 2, and then there was a final phase, and we had to have different consultants do all that. It was very time consuming. If we have to do it in a different format, it's going to require at least a third or half the same amount of time, which was.
Well, we don't know how much time it's going to take, but what we do know is that the numbers that we collected, all that raw data, is the information that we can plug into.
Right.
This system. So we don't have to go back and recreate.
The generation of the data.
The generation of the data, which took so much time, and which was really the bulk of that process. So we've heard from other jurisdictions, it should be pretty easy just to plug it in and spit it out in a different way. We don't really know, because nobody's gone through the process.
Okay, so if we move forward, which is first step, we sign a letter, and then we really find out it is going to take a lot of time, or consultant staff money, can we gracefully back out, because it's like, oh, we don't really want to go through, you know, a secondary version? It's, it's like translating the book we have that's in English to French, or something, you know? It's like, can we back out? I mean, just because of the time that we really didn't understand later?
Yeah, I haven't read anywhere any requirement that says, oh, and if you don't make it by the deadline, then sorry, you're going to pay $5 million. There's nothing like that.
Okay. No, that's still.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Where I'm at.
Okay. And I think it's a reasonable question. It's the same, similar question that we proposed at the Green Team meeting, because we talk about planning staff and the time that's required, we're talking about two people. They're both in this room, and they already have full-time jobs. So, um, you know, there may be, I think, potentially some additional vetting or, or reporting formats associated with the, with the contractor as presented that we have today to reformat, or potentially reformat what's going to be rolled up and wrapped up with the Go Green team for the future, and what we're, what we're preparing with our, our plan. But that said, I mean, as long as staff feels confident, because this was the, sort of the nexus of the discussion that we had with the Go Green team, that there wasn't going to be, at least in their interpretation, and they are speaking with other agencies about what their level of involvement is, that converting the existing data that we already had, this isn't a recreation, but that conversion was not going to be an extraordinary amount of additional time. Going forward, we would already have whatever this new format is, and there would be no relative incremental time to produce it, because we would be using that format going forward. So if, if I'm not interpreting this correctly, correct me, um, but what we're really suggesting here by authorizing us or the mayor to sign this letter for the Compact of Mayors principally supports, um, this letter being sent in advance of the summit that's getting ready to occur in Paris. That, that is, that is sort of the crux of the issue, and why we're being, it's being brought to us tonight, the last potential moment that we could get to it before this meeting is supposed to occur, right? I guess theoretically, we could get to December 1, but that, that would be tight. My concerns, I believe, and they're not unfounded with what you communicate, Councilmember Mueller, but my concerns are, you know, although we like to be pioneering, and we like to be at the forefront of these types of activities, that only 66 other communities have signed this, and I know tonight is a meeting of many other agencies, and that maybe there will be an onslaught of them. But this is a global initiative, and there's only 66 other agencies in the country, almost 20% of which are in the state of California, should cause us a little bit of, where is everyone else? Why are, you know, why is a 3,000-person community jumping on board when our relative impact on greenhouse gases compared to those larger cities, municipalities, or otherwise, are not involved? That's not saying that I don't believe we should participate, if there truly is a limited impact to what our potential work is going to be. But I ask the question, where is the rest of, where's the rest of the country in this activity? Because this is really important, this is really important work that's going on, and we need to get in line and understand that, that measuring the impact of these issues is not going to end with us approving to join this compact or not. It's bigger than that.
Yeah. I, I also wanted to be sure that this deadline of quickly assign, commit before December 4th is, just as you said, trying to get as many people committed before this climate summit meeting. If we choose to commit a year from now, two years from now, there's nothing stopping that either.
Correct. It's just, this, this is to try to make a meaningful statement in advance of this summit that's occurring. It's disheartening to the rest of our community to see that there are only 66 others at this juncture that have got in line. And great, a majority or a portion of those, or I don't know, know what 16 out of 66 is, but it's certainly not 30%, haven't even gotten, you know, they're from California, so I'm, I'm grateful for the state of California and the agencies or municipalities here, but I mean, it's, it's, it's really disheartening that we're so close to when this is going to occur. I would strongly implore the remainder of the council to support this, because I would hate to be one of those communities that didn't participate, given the gravity of the situation we're all facing. And the level of the impact and the input from our staff, I think, is negligible. And we, we would be early in the situation versus joining a year from now and trying to convert, because we're catching up with everyone else. That would be an impact that we may not want to have to continue or to decide upon.
Is that a question?
Well.
No. This is a statement.
Did I say that?
Any other questions about the staff report? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Uh, no questions.
Any other questions over here?
No, so, just so I'm clear. So we don't really even need an exit strategy, because that's my concern, all of a sudden, you know, because we had the state of California, ICLI provided this very expensive software. If something like, you know, I don't even know, I don't think they're going to accept Excel files. And we don't even know what kind of software. We know we're not going to be able to buy expensive software to put all this data in a format. So as long as, you know, we're comfortable that we're not locking ourselves into some, you know, time-consuming financial commitment that's just a duplication of what we're doing.
So I'll, I'll address, I'll try to address that.
That's how we.
This is becoming a much bigger deal than I think it needs to. But on the Compact of Mayors website, it says, you know, this is, and Nathan, you've described it. This is, this is a public recognition of the work we've already done, is the fundamental reason I even brought this forward, is because all the work that went into this, why not get recognition beyond our borders? And basically, just to very quickly summarize this, this isn't a question either. This talks about, um, the compact will enable cities to publicly commit to greenhouse gas emission reductions, make existing targets and plans public, and, and report on progress annually using a newly standardized measurement system that is compatible with international practices. So this is a new effort to globalize what people are doing, what you described that was more domestic, more local. This is the global version of that. Is there tweaking to the data that needs to fit their format? Yes. That's the time that would be required. But I leave it up to the people whose time it would be to decide if it's too much time or not. They said no.
Staff has determined it to be minor incidental.
Since we're through the question part, I guess we can continue to.
Well, just one other, one other question. I mean, you're aware that ICLI is recognized as one of the organizations that's in support of the Compact of Mayors.
Correct.
So, I mean, I can't, I can't believe that they would have you do something that they aren't fully capable of.
Just start all over.
Yeah.
They're one of the top three logos on the page, is, is that what the pet. So are there any other questions?
Sorry.
And then if not, will any members of the public have a question? I'm guessing no. So we can further have a conversation. Councilmember Dornbecker, I have a feeling you want to.
Thank you.
Speak.
I do have something to say, and that is, um, I'm so proud of our town of Yountville. You know, and back in the late 70s, when we were doing the, um, I guess that's when we started working with the waste, um, you know, wastewater treatment plant. Somebody from our town had the brilliant idea to build pipelines to deliver that wastewater to, um, other agricultural uses. So we have always been ahead of the, the curve. I don't think, you know, I think it is a shame that only 66 municipalities have signed up, but I'm very proud of us, and I'm very proud of you, Mayor Dunbar, for bringing this to us. I wholly support it, and we have done the work, and we're continuing to do the work with the climate action plan. Let's make that statement, that yes, we as a community are part of this effort to clean up greenhouse gases for all of us. Thank you.
Was that a question?
Well, I didn't.
I know, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Any further discussion? Councilmember Mueller? Vice Mayor? No?
I'm done. I mean, I, you know where I stand. We need to move this thing along. It's late.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, that we pass Resolution Number 15-3307, approving the town of Yountville to join the Compact of Mayors, and for the mayor to submit a letter of commitment to the Compact of Mayor Secretariat.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimously passed.
And that concludes the five-minute report.
I thought I heard 30 seconds.
I was talking for 30 seconds, the staff report segment.
I'm not so sure about that. So anyway, thank you for that.
I only talked for 30 seconds.
And, uh, we'll go ahead and get that submitted by the deadline.
Great.
Okay, moving on to our next item. What is our next item? We have already handled item 10A. Moving on, I do not have a report on the flood control meeting that was canceled, and we, the next transportation agency meeting is tomorrow. Already reported on our last meeting. Is there a need for a report from Upper Valley Waste?
No, we probably, we met yesterday, but we're continuing our strategic discussions.
Okay, very good. Reports and announcements. I did want to acknowledge the Chamber of Commerce and all of the volunteers and our celebrity chefs that did, for the 11th year in a row, a wonderful job of serving our veterans at the Veterans Home for their Veterans Day lunch. I also want to remind folks, we do have the Festival of Lights coming up on November 27th, the day after Thanksgiving, and I believe we do have two servings of Thanksgiving, traditional Thanksgiving dinner, led by Paul Lynda Moyer, again this year, over at the community center. If people are looking to have that celebration, they do need to sign up. Any other announcements from the council? Any other announcements? We did just have our Winter Wonderland. Hopefully, people got out there and started getting in the festive mood in the beautiful 65-degree sunny day. It was cold in the morning, though. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick update for the council. You may recall that we, the council issued a legislative subpoena, rather, a pair of them, to Airbnb and HomeAway. The responses were due tonight. As you can see, we have no representatives from either company, but they did respond in some form. HomeAway sent a very classic lengthy and completely misdirected subpoena opposition, which is entirely assuming that we were asking about transient occupancy tax collection. So I'll follow up with them, but they're completely off the mark. Nonetheless, they responded, which is interesting in and of itself. Airbnb asked for a 30-day extension so that they could talk with town staff about how to address our concerns. So we have an open dialogue with their legal department, and in consultation with the town manager, we agreed to give them that 30-day extension so that we could have a productive dialogue. So it's very encouraging, but that's, that's the update, basically, is that we got responses. They weren't at all what we expected, but at least one of them is positive.
And did not, did I see, I think Councilmember Durham sent the notice that HomeAway changed ownership?
Expedia purchased them, but it's still not going to close till 2016, so.
Interesting. Good to know. The response came from a law firm in Los Angeles. I know they're based, or have been based, in Texas, so I don't know if, how that, that'll affect their response to this.
Or in case we need to modify the subpoena filing. Just something to be aware of as you continue communication.
I'll give it thought. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other, I don't think we have any other business tonight, except for our closed session. So we're going to go ahead and finish the regular meeting. Any reportable action anticipated?
Likely not.
Okay. If so, we will certainly announce it. Otherwise, we are going to adjourn not just to an insert date, but that date being December